Scott, we have like a minute before it hits six, but if you want to come in and take us, actually it is six o'clock now. So, welcome Scott. I know you had approached the city clerk about coming in and talking about five minutes about yourself and some of the ideas that you want to bring to LTV, just so the public knows you're the new Carl Pomerini.
Yes.
So you probably spend more time than anyone at the, you know, at the studio, but are on less, on TV, less than anyone because you're the guy behind the scenes. So now everybody will get to see you. And just so that the public knows, this is not, we're not appointing you, that's already been done. You can explain the process for that and how you got here, but we are just simply informationally asking you to introduce yourself and just so we can all get to know you. So, the floor is yours.
Sure. My name is Scott Kurland. I was appointed, that was a loud train noise. I was appointed back in October after a long search for an executive director. I started officially in January under Carl and the staff has been great. My background is I started when I was 13 years old in Community Access as a PA, but back then, the 90s, it was called the Gopher. And since then, I worked for Comedy Central. I worked at various Community Access stations in Wakefield, Wilmington, Chelmsford, and recently Air. And my vision is to continue to do the great work that LATV, LTV has been doing for the past 20 years. I want to continue to be a resource for the community, to get news and information out and to allow people to have a voice and pretty much feel like a talk show host or a movie star.
Cool. So, is there any, is there any thoughts on what you'd like to, where you'd like to bring LTV? I know that I watch, we get, we get Fitchburg cable access down here as well, and I think Northborough, and when I'm surfing the local channels, we see, you know, and each, each one has their own diverse people and things that they, you know, do. Is there anything that you'd like to maybe see LTV kind of get involved in and, you know, as far as kids from, they have the college there, so they use that to their advantage. Any of those kids that are looking to get into journalism or, you know, TV broadcast, that's a good resource for them.
Yeah.
Certainly, we don't have, we're not a college town, but are there any other resources that you'd like to maybe sort of tap into in our community, just so the public can get some ideas maybe too?
Yeah. I pretty much want to start showcasing local businesses, give them a voice, give anyone who is interested in being, you know, on TV or become a producer, give them the training. All you have to do is come down to the station and sign up for a membership. You'll be trained by our great staff. We have Robert Bradley and Keith are here. We have a great crew and they're always willing to train.
Okay. Nice. Very nice. Well, welcome to the city of Leominster. And at this time, I'll ask if anybody has any questions or ideas that they'd like to counsel show for Zephyr.
Yep. Thank you very much for coming down. We all know Carl really well, so I think you've got big shoes to fill, but with your experience, it sounds like, you know, you have, you know, quite a lot of knowledge, you know, that you're bringing to the job. So in terms of reaching out to the community to get people to come in for training, to get people to come in and use the studio, for example, which is great, how are you doing that or what's your plan to reach as many people as you can?
That is an excellent question. I've been basically going around trying to find different organizations, whether it is the Boys and Girls Club or local businesses. I've reached out to several, I would say, different groups. Basically, the goal is to, you know, as I said before, educate. That is the number one goal. That's what Community Access is here for. Other than that, it's, it's basically word of mouth getting out there, using our social media, using our channel as a way. The most important thing is finding different ways and different tools that would interest the community, whether it's doing a regular 30-minute show or doing, creating podcasts or creating short-form media. The goal is basically to not put an age limit on it. My main goal is to try and get families together because it's a great tool. I mean, that's how I got involved. My dad used to take me to Chelmsford Television growing up and it was a great way to bond with my dad. So that's basically my vision is to put the community back in Community Access.
Nice. Counselor Arndt.
Thank you for coming down tonight. It's interesting. I'm sure you don't have a time machine, but that's another story. What do you think will be your biggest challenge?
I mean, the biggest challenge for any Community Access station is transitioning into, you know, the, I'll say digital realm. When Community Access started, it was mainly cable. We need to find different ways of getting our message out there. Also, we work with Comcast and Verizon and hopefully there will be other avenues in the future, whether it's, there is a proposed possible streaming bill as a way of getting more, let's say, notice. It basically comes down to using the tools we have. One hurdle that we always have to overcome is funding, is subscribers, because as you know, Community Access gets their money from Verizon, Comcast and different cable providers like that. I guess the future comes down to the community supporting us, whether it's getting local businesses to become underwriters of great programs like this, like the city council meetings or shows like Inside Leominster. It basically comes down to the community helping us out as well.
Cool. Okay. Counselor Arndt. Counselor Banda.
Good evening, Scott. It was a pleasure meeting you recently and look forward to working with you and it's good to have you aboard and I'll be down to see you shortly about continuing our Nation Rising series.
Yes. Very excited about that.
Look forward to it.
Counselor Brady.
Good evening. Picking up where Mark left, what percentage of new original program do you run?
We're in the process of creating brand-new shows, new content. Those numbers aren't really solidified yet considering I just started almost two months ago, but my goal is to create, you know, at least 25 to 50% in the next couple of months.
Okay. Great. And to follow up on the funding and things like that, you planning on applying for grants and things like that? You have some grant writing experience?
Yes. Basically, grant writing I've been doing for the last five years when I was at Air. It comes down to finding the right grants that fit, you know, the whole media literacy journalism aspect. And those are, you know, out there. It's just finding the right ones that you qualify for.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Freedom.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you plan a lot of changes in the way the operation runs, the way the structure is now? Do you have any new ideas that you want to put forward in, you know, the, some of the functions that you do around the city and the staff that you have now?
My biggest goal is to utilize social media more. Utilize that to let the community know that we're out there, to basically when we're filming stuff, let people know that we're filming, come out, say hi. And because as I said before, we want to get out, we want to know everyone's story. Everyone in this city has a story to tell and I would love to hear.
I guess just a minute for a shout out of who's been there. I mean, with Keith, who's pretty religious with our meetings and Alan and Jack and, I mean, it's just a great group of people that work there and they've been pretty much a success for many years. So you've got a good basis to start with for sure. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I wish you a lot of luck, Scott, in engaging the community. I can tell you that the first time I was invited up to FATV to do a show, you know, at first I thought it was going to be pretty intimidating, you know, sitting in front of all the cameras and, you know, you're talking to a camera and you're in a studio and it's a different experience, but like it doesn't take very long and before you know it, you're, you're kind of hooked. It's pretty cool. And, you know, you do a half hour show and it goes by just like that, you know. So hopefully you'll engage some, some new ideas in the community and have some good content and I look forward to, you know, to see what you can, what you can sort of engage people in in the community. So, welcome and thank you very much. And if there's anything that you feel that we can do to help, don't be shy, reach out and we'll do our best.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a 6:05 information session with the mayor. Wendy Weeks is also here, our grants writer, and Jen Reddington, our comptroller. If you would like to come in, anybody else that's here would like to come into the chambers? We have four, four bullets that we're going to discuss. The Hazard Mitigation Plan, ARPA Funds Round Two, C-41 on our agenda this evening, which entails for the council to authorize and appropriate departments to research, develop, and participate in contracts or contracts to aggregate electricity load of residents and businesses in the city, and also free cash. So, Mayor, I will, I know you have the TV on, I'm sure you have a wonderful slide prepared as usual, and I will let you introduce who you're here with so the public knows them and you can get started.
All right. We can stay here as long as you want tonight. We've tried to condense this all for you and get it all straightforward. We know there'll be questions tonight and then if there are questions later on, but this is probably four meetings worth of information. We originally came down for the aggregate and then we added on a few things, but the last thing we'll leave you with tonight is, is the capital improvement? And we're just going to leave that. We don't expect you to have questions on it tonight or anything, but take time, go through it and then we can come back down on that one. But that's just what's, what we have thus far and that kind of changes. And as you look at it, try to remember that what's on there, if something's listed, and we have things prioritized. It might be looking like it's a high priority and then maybe there's a grant that comes available, so that becomes a lower priority. So things change accordingly, but it'll give you kind of a layout of the next five years. Okay. So, we'll get going right away. To my left is our comptroller, Jen Reddington, and John O'Rourke from Director of Marketing and Municipal Affairs, and our assisting comptroller, Jim Pomerini. So we'll get to work right away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
I think up should be on it.
Is this better? Mr. President, Madam President, members of the board, thank you for letting me come before you tonight to give you a short presentation on community electricity aggregation and then open it up for questions. This is our customer-facing team here in Massachusetts. Philip Carr, who was supposed to be here with me tonight, we looked at the weather and I told him late this afternoon not to come up from Connecticut for the meeting. He is our managing director of energy sales here in New England. Stefano Loretto is our business development director and he also is involved in supplier relations and procurement. Then there's myself, Director of Marketing and Municipal Affairs. They tagged on that municipal affairs title because I spent nine years as a select board member, eight of those years as chair. So that was, that was an interesting experience. Then we have Patrick Roche, who is our Director of Innovation and Renewable Energy Policy Situation. We're backed by a team of 40 professionals, analytical, research, customer service, and administrative staff. Here in Leominster, you'll see mostly me. You'll occasionally see Philip and Stefano and Patrick. We have good working relationships with Green Energy Consumers Alliance. They are the, the gold standard here in Massachusetts for sourcing renewable energy certificates in, for the, for the aggregations we work with. We also work with Sustainable Energy Advantage. They're very good in renewable energy strategy, planning, market analysis, and procurement. We depend on those two organizations for our renewable energy resources. A little about Good Energy. We have combined 20 years of national experience and we, we came into this market in 2014, put together the local team with local expertise. Right now, we have 65 Massachusetts clients. The team operates the largest aggregation in Massachusetts with 25 municipalities. It's called the Mass CEA. Essentially, this started back in 2016. Again, 25 municipalities, the largest in Massachusetts, and recently became the largest of its kind in the country. This is how our aggregations shape up here in Massachusetts. We have 45 that are active. We have current launches. Right now, seven communities are launching, including your neighbor, the city of Fitchburg. We have three plans at DPU pending approval. We have four plans in development and we have new committed clients of six. And we're basically talking to another eight communities who are very anxious to move forward with aggregation. Aggregation only impacts the electric supply side of the account. The relationship with National Grid does not change. Anything that National Grid does now, they will continue to do. They continue to maintain the, the infrastructure, do the billing, servicing, you call them in case of outages. They do everything that they do now. The only changes on the bill are the name of the supplier and the rate. The goals of aggregation is to give your residents and businesses more competitive electricity choices, longer-term, stable electricity rates. As you're aware, National Grid changes its rate every six months. We just put contracts in place of 21 months, which is actually a lot shorter than we usually do. We usually have, most of our aggregations are in the 30 to 36-month range, but the market in this case dictated a shorter term. And as I say, the seven, the seven communities that are launching now have, all have a 21-month term. We always try for potentially lower electricity rates, although we always have to put in the disclaimer that savings are not guaranteed. And that's primarily because your rate for the utility changes every six months. We always have fixed-rate products. Again, it's, it's fixed for the, for the contract. You might be interested, the rate for Fitchburg is 17,268 per kilowatt hour as opposed to the unit till rate, which is 21,429. So they're below the unit till rate. Essentially, what towns and cities have been doing over the last three or four years, they've been using aggregation to put more renewable energy into the mix for their residents and businesses. They've essentially been using aggregation as a way to fulfill some of their environmental goals. One of the things that this program will do, it will increase consumer protection in that you will stop getting some of those phone calls and mailings from sometimes unscrupulous marketers of electricity. Right now, there are 175 communities out of 304 eligible communities with about 67% of the Massachusetts population that have approved electricity aggregation plans, and that includes Boston and Worcester. The other 47 communities that are not mentioned there, because Massachusetts has 351 municipalities, those 47 have municipal light plants. They essentially have their own utilities. So they are, are not, they're considered aggregations, but they're not in those eligible 304. So essentially, right now, you have two-thirds of the population here in Massachusetts that live in a community that has an approved plan. Good Energy has an extensive experience in providing public outreach and education to ethnically, racially, and economically diverse populations. Aside from excellent procurement practices, the public outreach and education portion of what we do is extremely important. We include Somerville, Waltham, Quincy, Fitchburg, Fall River, and New Bedford among our most diverse communities. This is an example of how that large aggregation we have, Mass CEA, has fared against the National Grid basic service rate. Essentially, you can see we're essentially below their rate except for the spring 2020 and 2021 rates. If you remember, those were the lockdown times when there was a, an increase in storage of natural gas. And as you know, natural gas is a precursor here in New England for the price of electricity. So essentially, the utilities were able to go out at very good times to bid because of that, that lack of commercial business, nationally actually, but here, here especially in the Northeast. Our research, our research people put this together recently. It shows the recent aggregation supply agreement renewals among all of the, those who deal here in aggregation in Massachusetts. It's Good Energy, Colonial Power, and Peregrine Energy. As you can see, we have been very good in terms of our renewals as compared to our We do everything, we do all the heavy lifting from start to finish. Essentially, with a, with a city, it starts with a vote of the council to basically approve the aggregation process moving forward. We take it through, we develop a draft plan, then we take it through the review and approval process. We take it through the regulatory process with the Department of Energy Resources and the Department of Public Utilities. We do significant outreach to your residents and businesses through multi-channels to make sure that everybody knows exactly what's happening. After the launch of the program, we manage and monitor the aggregation program to make sure everything is running smoothly and we provide all our municipalities with updated information and reporting. We also do all the reporting required by the Department of Public Utilities. You might want to note that the town or the city doesn't pay us in any way. We are paid on a volumetric basis by the supplier of the aggregation. And the supplier is, is determined by a competitive bid. This is just a few examples of some of the outreach that we've done with other communities. Again, we sit down with municipal officials, we work out a plan as to how you want to communicate with your residents and businesses. And again, we do that through multi-channels, through a website, printed material, TV interviews, press releases, just about any way we can think, social media, any way we can think of to reach the population. We have a very online, real-time data portal that can be accessed by the municipality that gives very good information on how the aggregation is progressing at any, any one point in time. Essentially, I'll leave it, I'll leave it here and I'll ask for questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. O'Rourke, Mayor, Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening. National Grid, most, if you're not under contract with a third party like yourself, you'd be classified as the fault customer with National Grid, correct?
Basic service customer.
And National Grid, they're prohibited from making a profit on the energy portion. They get paid specifically for delivery?
That's correct. Since deregulation occurred in the late 1990s, the utilities had to divest themselves of generation assets. Since then, they make no money on the supply. Most times, people think, well, why isn't the DPU doing something about the supply charge? Again, that's something that, that ended in the late 1990s. They don't control the price. They only look at the process that the utility has gone through to get the price. If that's okay, then they're, they're not concerned about the price.
So they basically go out to auction and they, and they're forced to take the lowest price that's being offered for that particular point in time?
Unfortunately, with the utilities, they have to go out to bid at two very specific times of the year. Sometimes, like now, they got caught in very bad markets when there were price spikes in the natural gas price.
I'm glad you brought that up because I think most people are unaware that, why rates are so high in New England in general is because we have a pipeline constraint bringing natural gas up to the Northeast. Am I correct?
You are correct. There is a constraint that way and, you know, certainly, a lot of people don't understand this, but some of the natural gas has been turned into liquefied natural gas, put on
LNG tankers.
LNG tankers and, and sent over to Europe.
And it, there was a fire recently at a Freeport-Macmarian terminal in Texas.
Yes.
And that LNG facility was closed down and that forced a natural gas futures down conservatively, did it not?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, I just want to go back and touch on one more thing if I could. When you talk, you, you mentioned briefly about increasing the percentage of renewables. Now, obviously, and I, again, if I'm saying anything you disagree with, feel free to interrupt me. Nuclear, natural gas, inexpensive as compared to renewables?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I just want to really go quickly down this list of a typical portfolio of, of energy mixes that make up the energy that's delivered to our homes and businesses. The biomass is zero. Coal, 0%. Hydro, 2.9%. Small hydro, 0%. Imported power, 0%. Municipal trash, 3.2%. Natural gas, 50.5%. Nuclear, 7.2%. Oil, 6.0%. Other renewables, 3.6%. Solar, 6.9%. three point six, solar, six point nine, system mix, sixteen point nine, and wind makes up two point one percent. Now, Massachusetts, we do have a rule that a portion of that, of that delivered energy product has to be renewable.
That's correct.
Okay. So is it safe to assume that if you increase the amount of renewables you're offering to a consumer, that's going to drive the price up a little bit, isn't it?
Well, you, you'd think that if, if your supply stays the same, but essentially, part of the reason to, to get, to put more renewables in place through renewable energy certificates, the money that goes to those, for those renewable energy certificates goes to support the, the development of new renewable energy facilities. So even, even though, you know, you have a situation where, in the short term, you may have an uptick in that price of that renewable. Over the long term, because of the fact that they're basically going to support new renewable energy facilities, that price should go down.
All right. Well, I'm personally, I'm a free market guy, and I'm not embarrassed to say so. And I like to see the marketplace dictate because of cost competitiveness. And, I mean, recently, in Washington, they passed an infrastructure bill, and, and it was an awful lot of money for renewables. And so we're, we've got, we've been blessed with a, a ton of natural resources here, natural gas for two hundred years. But instead, we're being directed to buy solar panels and windmills that are produced in Chinese factories that are powered by coal plants. So I find that ironic and quite troubling, I must, I must admit. So I think, I, I just want everyone to know, I mean, I brought exhibit here, I redacted my, my account number, but my last...
Can I have your bank account number instead? I couldn't care less about your utility bill.
Six hundred and thirty dollar electric bill, that's for one month, and I live in a very modest two-bedroom home. So I think we have to be...
Are you pumping oil all back or something that we don't know about?
My, my wife must have the heater on when I leave the house up to ninety. But, I mean, obviously, I'd like to see another pipeline, and, and they propose one in the same easement that the existing ones in. And that would reduce a lot of pressure and bring prices down. Because what we're doing is we're, we're killing the middle class with high-energy bills. We're forcing our companies to become less competitive. And, you know, for whatever reason, I, you know, I understand the environment's important, but we can't improve the environment while India and China are building new coal plants every month, and we have to sacrifice, and we have to become less competitive. So I, that's, that's my two cents. And I'd like to see regulators look at bringing more natural gas up here to the Northeast where you could get these prices down, and people could afford their electricity again, don't have to decide between electricity and the car payment, or the medicine, or the food.
So I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with the, the ISO to go at...
Independent System Operators, yeah.
Yeah. Well, right now, the, the only amount of energy that's produced by renewables is five percent in the grid right now, only five percent. And, and of those renewables, you've got forty seven percent refuge burning, thirty five percent wood burning. So that, and that's eighty two percent, okay, of your quote renewables are being generated by carbon emitting, quote renewables. Yeah. Wind is only eleven percent. So when you, when you look at, when you look at eleven percent of five percent, okay, wind isn't producing a whole lot right now in terms of renewables.
Killing a lot of wheels off.
You know, it, it certainly, it certainly looks like that. It certainly looks like that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Oh, you're welcome.
Councilor Inder, I saw your hand, and then Councilor Shoffel's after after.
Mr. O'Rourke, thank you very much. I have a question for you. How does this affect someone that has solar on, on their property? Because we have a lot of solar panels I see around town.
Anyone who has solar, okay, has a net metering agreement, that's unaffected by participating in the aggregation. You still get repaid at the rate of basic service, and anything you take, anything that, that's not, you know, covered by your solar panels, would be taken off the grid at the rate of the aggregation.
Okay. Now, there are, as you mentioned, some unscrupulous providers, third-party suppliers.
Yes.
I'm sure we all get those phone calls. This is your utility company calling, yeah, and we're here to help, but that's another story. But I have used a company, Constellation Energy, for years, and I have to tell you that their rates are significantly lower than yours, and I'm locked in for a three-year rate. Would I be forced to get off of that?
Well, you're, you're in a three-year rate that was probably negotiated a year and a half, two years ago?
Yeah, maybe about a year and a half, maybe a year ago.
Just, just before things got out of control. Constellation is, is one of the major suppliers in the country. We use them. They, they are the supplier to that large aggregation that I told you about, okay? We use only the four or five largest suppliers in the country because they're the ones that can handle this. They are one of the reputable ones, okay? You, you have half a dozen or so that, you know, they'll call older residents, and they'll tell them, oh, we can get you a discount. All you need to do is give us, give us your, your account number. Then they never hear from them again, and they find that they're in a contract at a very high rate. But Constellation is one of the reputable ones.
Now, one of the things that I've liked about Constellation is they use nuclear power. And after having spent eight years in the Navy in the nuclear power field, I am convinced that we are underutilizing, you know, a resource that is, certainly doesn't commit any carbon to the atmosphere.
No.
It does have a problem with, you know, what do we do with it afterwards? But, you know, it's still a pretty clean and safe energy. Why aren't we, well, you can't answer that question, but we should be using more of that, just a personal opinion.
Well, I, I think, I think you're right from a practical level. I think from a political level, that's where, where the problem lies.
That's the answer right there. That's why we don't, I mean, we have more liquefied natural gas.
Right.
We have more natural gas in the ground than anywhere in the world. So these are all political decisions. They're, they're not decisions that are made for the interest of you, for your electric bill at the end of the day. What we should be telling everybody on the electric bill is, this is explaining it in layperson's terms, this is what your electric bill, and this is where it's all coming from, but we don't do that.
So in summary, I can keep my solar panels, and when I get my credits during the summertime, I'm okay.
Absolutely.
And I can keep my Constellation Energy. And when it renew, when it ends, if I go into your system, am I locked in for the twenty one months?
You can get out of it anytime you want without penalty or termination fees.
Okay.
And essentially, when your contract ends, you can just go on the website, there'll be a website up with an enrollment form. It just takes about thirty seconds to fill it out from your national grid bill, and you'll be, switch on your next meter read.
So the biggest thing, Frank, that I found is, I mean, he, he can't promise you that when they lock in, they're always going to have the best rates. You just can't. The, the benefit of this is that everybody's in, and, and they manage everything. They do the PR on it and promote. There are, you, the thing that surprised me the most, guilty as charged, is people haven't been switching over because it seems confusing to them. And there are all these kind of factors that are into it, and then people just end up staying with National Grid because it gets overwhelming. And so what I've done is post these little kind of videos showing people how to do it and how to get the best rates. They can't always promise you the best rates. I took one of my bills last week and did a little video. I locked in at thirteen point four cents for six months and no opt fee. So I can get out at any time. The problem comes, we're all busy, and then later on, you know, you might sign up with this company, and there's a renewal, well, a lot of them are automatic. So unless they hear from you, they're just going to sign you up.
Right.
And you're going to forget about it because six months went by, eight months went by, and none of us have that time. So I'm going to find a really smart kid at the high school who can develop an app that does it all for you. Soon as my time is up, it's going to tell me the best rates, and then it's just going to lock me in when I say yes to it. And we're going to make zillions of dollars. So stay tuned. That's my goal for the next year.
This is just an alternative to other third-party suppliers?
Yeah. So basically, they're, they're doing a lot of the work that, a lot of the work for fifteen thousand properties in, in Leominster is what they're doing. And there's value to that, and they have to do the PR piece of it. If everybody just went to, you know, Switch Energy Massachusetts and looked at the rates, we could probably do better, but I don't know the likelihood of that. So this kind of takes a lot of the guesswork out of it. Like, right now, I signed up for a lesson with Fitchburg's bank. So any one of us can sign up right now. If you have a, if yours is, you know, they're at seventeen or whatever it is, if yours is at fifteen and there's no opt-out fee for getting out, you can just get out and sign up for thirteen point four cents right this second. So once you're locked in with them, you're locked in. But the, the benefit is, kind of like, they're the broker, they take care of all the paperwork. You know, one thing that seems to be an issue is, if you're one of those people like me that stands on the recycling bin, when you get these things, you just kind of fling them. Well, one of the notices is really important because it's the one that says you're in unless you tell us that you're out. So unless you opt out, you're in. So there's extra value that they're supplying for those that this just gets really confusing for. And honestly, it's like, it's like playing the stock market. If you watch it every day, you could keep moving this thing around, and who knows, next month, with warmer temperatures and more fuel coming in, whatever might happen, this thing might drop to twelve cents. It's already dropped, I mean, four cents, five cents since, you know, since January. So that's the value. I mean, wouldn't you say that, that's, they take a lot of the guesswork out of you. Maybe you didn't get it for thirteen cents, but you got it for seventeen or whatever it was, but they, they did all the work for you, and that's the value of it. But right now, you can sign up. I don't know, would you lock in at?
Seven or ten.
Yeah, so there you go. But you better be ready for when the contract's up, because they're probably not going to call and say, hey, Frank, you know that twelve cents we gave you? Guess what? It's now, you know, it's, it's now, they're probably unlikely to do that. And they, they take care of that, right? I mean, that's part of what they do. So there's, there's some added sense in there, and it's because of the, you know, the value of what, you know, services they provide.
That large aggregation I mentioned is, the rate now is ten four seven.
Ten four seven.
Yeah, it goes to the end of this year.
Yeah.
Then, then we're, we're going to, we're going to look to rebid them soon, because you know what happened to what natural gas prices do in now, they're sinking.
Yeah, right. But they may go up because China's back from COVID, their industry's kicking back in, they need gas, we ship it, goes all over the world. I mean, that's speculative.
And, and essentially, we can't do anything, okay? We can't say boo without the approval of the Department of Public Utilities. So everything we do, every step we take has to be approved by them. So it's not like we're doing anything on our own, or the city's doing anything on its own. Everything is approved by the Department of Public Utilities.
I think, in, in summary, it's probably a great program, because as the mayor mentioned, not everybody watches their utility bills like a hawk like possibly Peter and I do, but, you know, it's, because people don't pay attention. But I just want to make sure that people understand that they have a choice, that they're not locked into you, and they, if they have solar, it's not going to affect them.
They, they can leave the program anytime they want with no termination fees or penalties. And they can come back into the program if they want.
All right, great. Thank you.
Councilor Shoffel's after.
Yeah, yep. Thank you very much. I'm involved with a local nonprofit here in town, and we just switched our supplier to Constellation. And over the, just in a month, the savings has been dramatic. I mean, it really cut it, I think, just about by half. It was amazing. I have kind of a variety of questions, so I'm going to just bounce around a little bit. How, what's your oldest client? How long have you been in the business doing this municipal aggregation?
We, we started an aggregation in Illinois in two thousand and eleven.
How about here in Massachusetts?
Here in Massachusetts, two thousand and fourteen, and our first aggregate, we, we started in the market then. We went through the process through two thousand and fifteen with those twenty five initial communities. And we started, that aggregation started in January two thousand and sixteen. So we're going, we're, we're at year seven right now.
Okay, thank you. Question, so would people, you know, change their supplier? Has, have you seen, or is, I don't even know if it's legal to do this, but has National Grid, because they're losing that revenue, do you see any kind of uptick or increase in their delivery rates?
National Grid's not losing any revenue from anybody in the aggregation because they make no money on the supply.
Okay.
They continue to service the account just as they do now.
Okay.
They make the same money with anyone who's in the aggregation or anyone who's on the basic service. The question always comes up, if I'm in the aggregation, am I going to get inferior service from National Grid? Absolutely not. They don't care where the supply comes from because they're not making any money on the supply. So they're not going to, you know, pick and choose whether to give you better, better service or not. You'll get the same services every, everybody, whether that's good service or not.
Okay, no, that's helpful, I think. Community participation, I think in some of the marketing material, it was, you know, you go out and you market to the community. Does the participation rate have an impact on the rate that we ultimately get?
Well, I showed you this, this slide, which is very interesting. We deal with, with the same suppliers as our competitors do. And you can see how our rates here are pretty much lower, much lower on our renewals than our, our competitors are. We have a national clientele commercially and industrially, so we're in the market. We know what the market's doing. We have good relationships with the suppliers. And essentially, you know, we're, we're not, we probably get, in our aggregations to begin with, we get eighty to eighty-five percent of those people who are eligible to commit to the aggregation, okay? And that's, that's the eligible customers are those on the basic service of National Grid. Anyone who is on the basic service will get what is known as a customer notification letter at the time of launch. Anyone who's on a third-party supplier will not, because we cannot market to those who have already chosen a third-party supplier.
Okay.
And essentially, what happens most of the time is that our aggregations grow. We start in that eighty to eighty-five percent range, and, and the suppliers know that we're going to get that eighty to eighty-five percent. That's why we can get rates that are somewhat lower than our competitors, because they know what they're dealing with in terms of, of what they're going to get and what they're bidding on. Our aggregations increase in size. We have some that are now in the ninety-two, ninety-three percent range of all eligible customers. You're always going to get a small group of people who, no matter what you do, are just going to stay with the utility for whatever reason. But our aggregations usually increase in numbers.
And there's no incentive for us to try to get there initially, right, with the initial signup? There's no impact on the, the aggregation rate? You know, to market to consumers, and we want people to sign up, right? But my question is, is there any incentive to try to get ninety-six, ninety-five percent more than the average?
Well, essentially, you know, certainly, we want to maximize the number of participants in the aggregation. But again, that, that depends on, you know, the, the sense in the town of, of people. Again, most people understand that it, that's usually a good thing to do. There's that group that doesn't come into it initially, that come into it eventually, all right? And essentially, the rate doesn't change depending upon the number of people that come into the aggregation, okay?
Yep.
Again, that, that's a, that's a show of confidence on, on the part of our suppliers that they know they're going to get at least that eighty percent number, so they know what they're bidding on.
Okay, good. And how long is the process? I mean, when, you know, from now until, you know, people can sign up?
Good question. Okay. When we did our initial twenty-five plans back in two thousand and fifteen, it took an average of seventy-three days to get through the Department of Public Utilities to approval. That's two and a half months. The seven plans that we're, we're launching now took two and a half years.
That's what I thought, yeah.
The, the Department of Public Utilities has gotten a lot of bad press for that. They've gotten state reps who have just, you know, knocking down their doors, wanting to know why this has happened. There, there's been, there's been talk that, that, and, and we're, we're working with other entities on an amendment that would say basically that if a municipal aggregation plan isn't passed in a certain amount of time, it would automatically be passed.
Approved, okay.
Okay? Because that's what your neighboring states of Rhode Island and New Hampshire do, okay? You know, you, you had a situation with the Department of Public Utilities where you had COVID, you had lockdowns, that slowed things down. You also have a situation where they have other dockets that they have to act on because they have statutory deadlines. So you would get situations where the aggregation dockets would be coming up to the top, and something would happen, they'd go back down to the bottom because there were other, other priorities that had to take, take place. But I think we're going to... But I think we're going to see it shortened quite a bit. I would like to see it right now go down to under a year, okay? Hopefully, it's not that long. And again, there's an amendment being worked on that could be a lot shorter than that. When you figure, you have a hundred and seventy-five municipalities with a plan in place and these documents have been vetted over the last seven years and refined, again, we can't do anything without their approval. So all the documents that go into them for, for the plans and for the approvals, they've seen already, they've gone over them, they've refined them, okay? No reason why it should take, in my opinion, more than ninety days, okay? But we'll see what happens. And we got a new administration, we're going to have new hearing officers at the DPU, we're going to have a couple of new commissioners who run the show. So we'll see what happens.
I'm glad you mentioned Rhode Island because what I've heard from manufacturers over the years, you know, one of the biggest challenges, I think, for local businesses, particularly manufacturing, are electric rates here. And if they made their items in Rhode Island, they would be paying a lot less money for utilities. What, do you, I mean, in a kind of very succinct way, can, do you know why? Do you know why that is? Why?
Well, right now, we're aggregating the city of Providence and eight other communities in Rhode Island. And we're trying to get that rate down, you know, significantly.
Counselor Angelini, on your bill, does it show, flip it over, does it show a sales tax for people's utilities bills?
Let's see, oh, it's on the front, right? I don't see a tax.
You're taxed on your, on your bill.
Where is it?
Some states don't tax on their bill. If you have a big company and you have a lot of electricity, that adds up as well.
Yeah, it was huge. I mean, the discrepancy.
We tried, I don't know if you remember this, but we tried.
Manufacturers are exempt from the sales tax.
If you're, if you have a manufacturing status, not all do, some LLCs or corporations, and you lose that, you lose that manufacturing, you have to be a man, you don't have to be a manufacturer.
No.
Have that status. Because we had some people in town and you lose that, like, you write for a personal property tax. If you're a manufacturer, that's exempt. If you're not, you pay it. So there's, but if you're, if you're a business and you're not, then you pay a sales tax. Everybody, every single individual pays a sales tax on your, on your utility bill. But back some years ago, myself in the chamber, when this first came out, we tried to get businesses to sign on, we couldn't get enough businesses to sign on to make it worth it to the company that was putting all this together. At the time, maybe it was just that, you know, the rates were competitive or just people were busy with other thing, maybe, maybe it was something else, work meant, maybe some other issue was, was, you know, kind of dwarfing the importance of it all. But, but we've tried it before and just didn't have any help. This now seems to be. But people have to just understand, you know, the rate can go down and you can opt out. That's the important part, is if the rate goes down, you can opt out and there's no penalty for opting out. I'm not trying to kill your sales pitch here, but I got a responsibility to people that are in town. And the reality is, you know, just like my business, same thing, we changed over and I was waiting, but after he said a year, I'm like, well, two thousand dollars a month, I can't keep paying that. And we reduced it down to somewhere around fourteen hundred, somewhere around there. That's a pretty significant savings. I expect it, you know, as things get, temperatures drop, you know, in the next six months, it'll probably drop. But it's really easy and I think people just get overwhelmed by it all. And it isn't all that hard to switch over once you do it. You put in your zip code, it's your house or your home, it'll give you a list of everyone, tell you where there's an opt-out fee, cancellation fee. At the very beginning of the year, they were charging you a hundred and fifty dollars for, to get out. That was when it was the highest rate. Now, it's pretty much everybody's offering you a free out. So if rate changes and you sit around looking at your bill, your bill all day, you find out it went down another two cents, that you want to move on, you can just move on. But again, there's some value to, you know, to what these companies do and, you know, for the people that six months goes by like that, didn't have a chance to look, all of a sudden they renewed, it's a higher rate, you know? So there is some value to it. If you're a person that watches the bills, keeps a calendar and it goes off and said six months are up or eight or twelve and you could get a better rate, then this might not be for you. And you're going to get a significant amount, in Pittsburgh where people were not happy because they were automatically in before they opted out. That does happen. I'm sure in every community that, that happens.
We get, we get that question in every community. Why isn't an opt-out rather than an opt-in? Massachusetts established the first municipal aggregation law in the country in nineteen ninety-seven. Every successful law since then has been modeled on the Massachusetts law. Opt-out is the only way to go because you get a situation where within a thirty-day period, you're going to get everybody in who didn't opt out. So the suppliers know what they're dealing with. And again, you have a situation, both Rhode Island and New Hampshire, they had aggregation laws in place for fifteen years or so that were opt-ins and nothing happened. Because suppliers are not going to bid on an opt-in plan because they don't know what they're bidding on. They changed three years ago, both of them, to opt-out plans and now they have, they're having success in aggregation, both Rhode Island and New Hampshire, we're involved in both of those states now.
Thank you.
Counselor Frida.
John.
Counselor, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Wonderful.
Good. So let me understand, someone has to have a contract? No contract?
No contract.
So I think typically, the electric companies, it's May and October, they raise their rates? Am I correct on that?
Well, you have, you have National Grid.
Right.
They change November first and May first.
Right, okay, so May and November. So if somebody sees the rate drop and they're paying a lot more, you're saying they can just change and go back to National Grid?
That's right. Okay. Now, there's something about the procurement that the utilities do, okay? They procure fifty percent of one year's load with each adjustment. So National Grid has that thirty-three percent rate, that's going to be baked into that next adjustment, okay? The chances of that rate coming down significantly is probably slim to none. It's probably going to be at least in the low twenties for that next adjustment.
I was just doing a hypothetical because it's May and November, I mean, it can go up, the same way they can go down, so. But I guess my point was if someone's got, you know, a good rate and they think it's a good rate and all of a sudden they see National Grid dropping and setting their rate lower, then they have the right to change.
They can change at any time without penalty or termination fees. And again, it's an online form, it takes thirty seconds to fill out.
It's a little bit different, but remember several years ago, oil companies were locking you in?
Right.
And they'd say, you know, it's a, you know, two dollars a gallon will lock you in for the season and people locked in. Well, they're buying futures, that's what they bought it for. Then the cost of oil went down in February and those people were like, yeah, but oil's a dollar fifty a gallon, I'm paying two. Right, but we locked in. They became extremely upset. Nobody offers that anymore for that reason.
And I think that's, that's the bigger issue that I hear all the time, is people are afraid of entering into a contract, they can't get out and they're going to have to continue to pay.
That's why you can get out.
More money until the date comes up.
And that's why you can get out. If you do your shopping and somebody dropped five cents, you don't want to stay, off you go, still have another farm, pick another company and you're done.
See, it's our responsibility when we take you out to bid, to get you the best price we can. We sit on your side of the table, okay? We don't sit on anybody else's side of the table. We want the best for our clients because essentially, that's how we keep our clients over time, is doing the best job we can.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? We do have to start our meeting in a couple of minutes and then we'll recess, but if you have one more quick question, Counselor Angelini?
I do, one more quick question from Mr. O'Rourke. So for industrial customers, some of them manage their capacity utilization cap tag.
Yep.
So could they get a pass-through rate if they manage their capacity tag? So they're just looking to buy energy only?
Essentially, most of your, your industrial clients have already secured a broker, okay? We don't, we don't, we find very few industrial companies trying to come into the aggregation, so we don't, we don't fool around with capacity tags.
They did see, you know, residential and business, so I just wanted to ask a question.
It's small business, it's G ones, okay?
G threes, yeah.
Okay, G threes are, you know, usually, usually your G three accounts have already basically made their deals with brokers for procurement.
Yeah, the demand response programs and everything else, so there's other, yeah, other programs that suit them better. But thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for attending.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your time. And in just about thirty seconds, we're going to start our meeting and then we'll recess and we'll take care of the.
I just wanted to thank Jim. Jim was kind of the lead, Jim Pemmaridi.
Yes.
He taught me all this, I didn't like teach myself this. He ran with this thing and he's been working on it for months and with everything else that he's done, he's just simplified it, made it easy to understand, talked to all the different companies that are out there and brought a few in so that we could interview, so.
Nice, thank you.
He took it from this to that, so thank you, Jim.
Cool, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
You too, thank you. Okay, the time is now seven PM, so I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Leominster City Council to order for February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We all please kneel before me for a salute to the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now take a roll call of the counselors, beginning with Counselor Bidanza.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ardinger.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Present.
Counselor Shafra Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deegan.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
I am present, all nine members are present. Does the Madam Vice President have any records to approve this evening?
I do, Mr. President. I have reviewed the records, the records from January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three and from February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I find them to be in good order. And I'd asked the, Mr. President, to have them placed on file.
Okay, if there are no objections, we will place those on file. Counselor Frida.
It's not really an objection, it just, I can't find it. Just kind of clarification. When June Quaterma spoke in the public forum regarding or during the hearing for the telephone poll on Chalmers, there was just a comment that she supposedly made that said that the poll is right where our house is, which obviously it's not, but, you know, in her yard near her house or whatever, but it's not, it's not in her house. And that's what it kind of implied. So I think that should probably be clarified.
Yep.
Okay, if you can review that, Madam Clerk.
Caitlin.
It's on page two at the bottom, the statement of February thirteen minutes.
Okay, are there any other concerns? Counselor Brady?
Yeah, just on January twenty-third, did revised copy of the minutes get distributed? Because I didn't get a copy.
No, not yet. I just got the edits from Sue and I'm going to incorporate them in.
Okay, so.
A couple of small edits and a couple of.
There was a pretty substantial one where Counselor Cormier was credited with asking for reconsideration, which was actually me.
That's been adjusted in the new set.
Okay, I just hadn't seen the, so I, I'm not comfortable voting to approve it without seeing it.
I can have them redone for the next meeting, that's fine. I just got the edits tonight.
If you want to, if you want to wait, we can, it's not a big deal, we can wait and review them one more time, make sure that the edited version's in order.
Great, thank you.
It's not a problem. If everyone's more comfortable with that, Madam Vice President, you will. So if I'm understanding correctly, the February thirteenth ones will be put on file and January twenty-third, everybody just wants to see a final. And then hopefully, everything will be corrected at the next meeting and we'll just approve them, okay? All right? Any other concerns, questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion for a recess. Counselor Shafra Zephyr, seconded by Counselor Frida. Are those in favor of recess, seeing fine usual manner? Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, we are now in recess. So Mayor, it looks like the third bullet, C dash forty-one, has been resolved, so you have the hazard mitigation, ARPA and free cash if you want to discuss those.
All right, we'll take hazard mitigation, we're going to work so hard on this, pull all the pieces together so we can get approved.
We have our hundred and forty-four page plan now, thanks to the government. So this is the first, our hazard mitigation plan that we just finished is our first standalone plan. It's a five-year plan, the others have been regional, but MEMA decided that they wanted, and rightfully so, that they wanted larger cities to have their own plan. So this is our first plan, it rolls over everything, every part of the regional plan that was ours into the new plan. All of you have seen it, it's available on our website, we've put it out there, we've had several public hearings on it. But basically, the goal is to figure out anything in Leominster that could be a hazard for us, whether it's, you know, it's, we went through public hearings with analysis of wind and tornadoes and flooding and everything and have incorporated that all into one document with the goal in the end being that we want to match what our hazards are with public resources for, you know, especially from FEMA to, to fund those projects that address, we've rolled in our climate action plan to this, we've rolled in our MVP plan to this, all, our open space plan, all of that has been rolled into this one plan. So now we stand ready to go get some funds to resolve this. There's our team, from the mayor to the DPW, fire chief, police department, our economic development people, you know, huge presence from the DPW and emergency management, they have a lot to, they have, they have a lot of knowledge, so it was a great team. This is our, this is our process, we reviewed our existing hazard mitigation plan, we had some internal team meetings, then we had some public meetings and comments, which several of you attended, and then we had another public doc, another public review for comment on the plan, and then we submitted our final plan. So what's before you tonight is just a final acceptance, it's been reviewed and approved by FEMA, but they want it, they like it to come back to the local, the local board for a final approval, so that's what's before you. We, you know, part of this is to make sure that we know exactly, whether it's public, private, nonprofit, that all of this is, we have this all on a map so that we know exactly, you know, if the power grid goes down and health alliances is affected, that we, that we get to them and we, you know, we know now exactly who has generators, who has, you know, anything that they might need, we can, we can.
And National Grid has a priority system where they list priorities. So unless we change that for some reason, so if that hospital's out or a police station's out, but we're like, hey, don't worry about it, higher priority is the fire station at this particular time, but they have a whole system in place and we have an operator's kind of system to that if necessary, but we're on the same page.
So this is long, but basically our high priorities, you know, we want to set, set us, obviously, we have the stabilization fund in case of emergencies, so we're all set with that. We want to work with neighboring communities. And we, you know, some of these things on this list, like dam analysis and, you know, we've already started to work on some of these things, like the Colburn Pond Dam, that's already in design, so we'll be in line to get money to construct that. So we've, we've really dug down deep to get all these priorities in order in this one document. You know, a lot of the stuff, we've maintained and upgraded our generators, we've done seven city buildings in the past two years with generators. You know, it just, it's, I have to say, I'm really proud of it. It's a really comprehensive document and it's really going to serve us well over the next five years.
Outbreakers have been done over, we're doing our dams, we've done a number of stabilization projects for the river. Remember, the city's surrounded by twelve, twelve hills, they say the twelve hills of Leominster, and when you have all that runoff from storms or spring melt, it's coming downhill and we have to be ready for it. We have a number of rivers and tributaries that feed the city, two railroads, two different railroads that we have in the city, a number of, you know, intersecting roads like one ninety, one seventeen, we've got Route twelve, I mean, we've got Route two coming through. And all those have to be weighed into the process.
And now, our team's success, which is one of the biggest successes I think I've seen since I've been here, we named in this document and several documents, Manu Snockbrook near Manning Ave, it's a six-point-three million dollar project. MEMA had about ninety million dollars to recommend under the FEMA COVID disaster program and we will recommend. and we were recommended at four, so it'd be six point three, and they would pay ninety percent. So that's gone to FEMA for final review, and, you know, I, I'm not gonna say we got it, but it's, it's in good shape. And we also got phase two of the, of the North Nashua, right now we're working on phase one, which.
Behind the treatment plan.
Yeah, so that is eroding and, and eating away at the, you know, toward the infrastructure of that, so that's being repaired. So out of the ninety million recommended for the state, you know, we got six point three and one point seven, so we're, it was a lot to be proud of. I'm gonna move on, if there's any, is there any questions about the hazard mitigation plan? Nope? All right, I'm gonna move on to the American Rescue Plan funding update. Here's some of our highlights, we, we came down here in December of twenty-one, and we told you some of the things we were gonna do, we've done those things, we purchased frontline police cruisers, we replaced our ambulance, we paid two out of three years of the police tasers, body cameras contract. Engine three is on order to be replaced, it's taking about eighteen months to two years now to get an engine. We bought an air compressor, fire department building upgrades to all three stations and the headquarters. We've, we've got on order two dump trucks from DPW, we paid some toward our paving contract, city hall roof, EMA improvements, Veterans Center improvements, and some toward our FY twenty-two paving. And here's some of the, I won't read all these, but here's some of the program highlights, because the program's divided into two, lost revenue and then program funds, where you have to stipulate to why you felt that the funds could pay for these projects. You know, some equipment for the DPW, and some, some for the fire department, upgrades to some of our parks, Schollen Farms, we helped them out. We've, we've got sixteen applications to our facade program downtown, that was a big push for the, for the ARPA funds, was to help downtowns and businesses recuperate from, from COVID. We've reached out to the Spanish Center, they've got an outreach program running now that'll last until two thousand twenty-four and beyond, hopefully, to reach out to some of these students who, you know, minorities, low income, who, who just haven't been able to catch up from, from COVID, I'm missing, you know, being at home with, during, during.
And maybe aren't back in school.
Yeah.
And, and we need to get them back in, but that, part of the reason that the enrollment numbers have dropped.
So, real quick, is, you know, one of the things we try and do is maximize the funding to, to match with other funding. So the Monmouth Interfaith Housing Project in North Leominster, we committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to their project, we're now applying for a Mass Works grant of three million dollars for sidewalks and infrastructure around that. Part of the Mass Works program is a match for housing and, and economic development, which the program, the project runs all the way from, from the housing project to the commercial district over on Hamilton and Crawford Street. So that'll be a, that'll be a huge win, we'll sidewalks sewer water over in that area. Now, the paramedic program, the paramedic program is, is something that we've been hoping for, for a long time, it was just the, it was, now is the right time to leverage some ARPA funds, we've committed five hundred thousand dollars from ARPA, we've leveraged two hundred thousand in city funds, and we've got that program up and running to the point where it'd be self-sustaining, you know, we just needed some, some other funding than we had in the past, so that'll be a, that, that's obviously a huge benefit to the residents and businesses in Leominster. And finally, we have a, quite a funding structure, last year for our paving program, we took about a million dollars in ARPA funds, and we matched it with RAP funding from the state, our Chapter ninety funds, some city funds, and we're, in the end, we're able to pave and do sidewalks for two, four point two million dollars, so that's a, you know, that's, I, I think, a good use of, of, you know, using a million dollars and matching it with three point two million, so. Here's our totals, we've committed five point six million for lost revenue, six point five for program funds, and we have about seven point four million left, which is uncommitted and unspent. So we have to commit the funds by the end of two thousand twenty-four and have them spent by the end of two thousand twenty-six. So that's, that's where we stand. There's any questions on that? We're happy to answer them.
What is the lost revenue funds, spent, committed?
So the, the, the program's divided into two segments, one, it allowed us to, it, there was a formula that we could use that determined what our amount of lost revenue was during COVID.
The city's lost tax revenue?
Right, so hotels, we didn't owe any hotel tax, any of that.
Okay, so that's lost city revenue, I just wanted to make sure that that's what that was.
But, so what they did was, they did a calculation, and they just said, of the grant, that those lost revenue portions don't have as many restrictions on them.
A little more flexible on them.
So it's the same, it's still in the, you know, grant, ARPA grant funds, it's all the same pool of money, just they have different requirements, so the lost revenue portion that they say, okay, well, you know, with your revenues that you would have collected, you would have been able to do anything you want with them.
Right.
Within, you know, there are some restrictions. And then there are the program sides that you have to follow, it has to fall under the categories.
So do you have the, like, a specific list of that, like how that's been committed?
She, most of it was, yeah, most of it was on that, highlights of lost revenue.
Oh, okay.
And then the second tab was the program funds.
The second piece of it, yeah.
Yep, okay.
I, I have to, I have to say, Wendy has kept, I mean, we set out at the very beginning, there'll always be someone or other communities that are trying to use the money for things that, you know, they're always trying to be creative about how to use it, and we set out with the agreed understanding that we're gonna use it for what the intended purposes was, and that was to stabilize business in the city. And then, and, and then, so when, I know people use that term investment, when you talk government, it's like, yeah, it's, it's an investment, we truly used it to stabilize, we didn't lose, we, I can, I can say this, we lost one business attributed to COVID, and it was somebody, and it was unfortunate, because she did a wonderful job, she opened the wedding attire, pleated gowns and dresses up at, at Twin Cities, she expanded it from Westminster, she did not, it was nothing that she did wrong, but she saw down the road that it was gonna be, she probably had some, she must have had clear vision, because I didn't think it'd last this long, and before we started seeing weddings come up again at proms, it was a good two years, and she just decided at that particular point that she was gonna opt out. Other than that, we've kept everyone going, we've kept the whole city going, employees, safety, you know, stabilized everything, and then the other component is to actually make improvements, and that was the, the goal we originally set out to, and Wendy kept us very focused on the creative financing, that sometimes people say, oh, let's use the money for this, and let's use it for that, we didn't do that. She was really, kept us on, on target, on what we were supposed to be using the money for.
And I have a lot of binders.
Yes.
Well, you have a lot of reporting, right? You're the one who has to do the reporting, so.
A ton.
And we've tried to be very careful with the funds as well, I mean, I know some other communities have already obligated all of their funds.
Yes, yes.
And that hasn't been our strategy, you know, we've tried to use them, you know, like the mayor said, for very specific purposes, and utilize other grants, I mean, just this last week, there has been a ton of new grants that have come forward for, you know, potentially internet use or the infrastructure bill, so we don't want to just.
Pay for things, and then find out we could've gotten with a grant.
Exactly, so we've tried to, it's been a slow process, we, you know, we've tried to slowly make sure, okay, you know, this isn't something that we think we could get other funding for, okay, fine, or it fits specifically in the grant programming, but that's why we still have, you know, the cautious spending that we have and the seven million left.
So what is the process? I mean, if people are interested in applying for ARPA funding?
We use, so every year we have that community development block grant.
Sure.
Hearing.
Meeting, yeah.
That gives us a really good kind of perspective on the needs of the, it's really a needs assessment every year before the, the funds are allocated, then the committee looks at that. So we take that as a big barometer to things, and then occasionally, there'll be some, somebody that'll come in, of course, John Ho's always been, you know, an advocate for housing, these people come to these meetings year after year after year and advocate for, for housing or whatever it might be, and then there are some that just let us know about a, a need that they think is a need, and then we just take a look at it, and again, look at, well, is there funding from luck, or is there funding from another agency that we should be going to, rather than just, let's just, you know, put up the mind, and then see whether it qualifies for the program.
No, that's good. Wendy, this is really good information, could we have copies of the?
Sure. Yep.
I'm interested in the ARPA slides specifically. Thank you.
May I? Okay, are you all set?
I was just gonna say one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wendy said that she was really proud of the hazard mitigation report, you should be. I mean, I started re, I, I, it took a long time to go through.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of detail, but it's very, very valuable.
I walked right by, a drive-by.
It's really valuable.
Like, wow.
Thanks, thank you.
And hopefully, after this, they know how to spell Manusnock.
Wendy, may I, may, I'm glad sort of we segued into that, because I just wanted to compliment you, obviously, and the entire team on the hazard mitigation plan, as you know, I attended several of those meetings, everyone was fully engaged.
Yes.
I mean, it was, I was beautiful to watch, and I think that exercise is also paying dividends on the ARPA funding, because you identify potential problematic areas where funding, you know, could go a long way, especially as you demonstrate leveraging, you know, one million into three point two. So as a taxpayer and a member of this council, I love to hear stuff like that, it's heartwarming, so thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. I'll just give you a quick example of, we're gonna do a Mass Works grant, the one I was talking about, and I called the DPW, and they, they literally have a, you know, they can tell you what sewer, if you say this area, they can tell you what sewer pipes and what water pipes need within a day, and they give me a map, they give me costs, so, you know, that team down there is really, you know, but it's the same with every department, you know, the fire department, we had opportunities, but we just applied for a grant for six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, you know, it helps to have those department members so invested in it, and they give me all these good things to write, right, from a fire perspective. So it's every department is, you know, plays a role in the whole thing, so.
No, I had, I had my notes, you know, it was from flood, flood storage to forest fires, I mean, just everything in between.
You're right, the word is engaged.
Yeah.
Take ownership, and they're engaged. The other thing I think that helps us with these agencies is, we don't, there are some communities, and it's a strategy, is you do nothing and wait for, you know, for instance, communities that were in terrible shape with their pension program, wanted to be able to use this funding to bail them out of their pension. So in other words, they look at these plans and look at other things that we've done already, where we didn't just kind of throw the towel up and say, we'll just wait, sooner or later, they're gonna have to give us funding for this. Eye to eye, is a good example, we took the initiative to, where ninety-nine percent of our infiltration is, is gone, we've removed it, separated our, our stormwater from our sewer, a lot of communities are still discharging into the rivers, unconscionable, in two thousand twenty-three, they're still discharging into the rivers. Now, that's not the same. Yeah, they're waiting for somebody to hand them the money, but that doesn't mean it won't happen, it could happen in any community, but to just not do anything and allow the problem to happen, because you think the federal government, the state's gonna step in, they know, they know exactly what we're doing here, and that we've invested in these things when other people haven't. So it does matter, and as you said, they're, take ownership and engage, so they know they're getting a good plan, Wendy writes a good plan because, you know, she knows that's the criteria, right, people are really excited about this.
Okay, any other questions on anything so far?
And this is the short version, that sounds like.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't wanna see the long one. Council Frida?
Yeah, not a question, just a, a compliment, you know, to Wendy and the staff and, and the comptroller's office, I mean, following those meetings for a month, a year with the lieutenant governor, and changing from month to month, and the representatives for ARPA from the federal government, one month it'd be one way, then the next month it'd be something else.
It still is.
So it's kind of remarkable that you've been able to follow, follow the line and get us to where we are, so.
For, for what the, for what the purpose of the funding was supposed to be?
Yes.
That's critical, I've heard things you couldn't even imagine.
I mean, I don't think there was one municipality that, that was on those meetings could really understand.
Right.
You know, what they were saying, I mean, and I don't think they really knew.
No.
So, you know, to get to this point, you know, it really, really took an extra ounce of intelligence on, on following that, so.
Yeah.
You know, credit to you, Wendy.
And in, and right after they dished out the money, they, Congress did not approve the helpline. So, here we go, we're on our own.
I, I just wanna echo that, too, I, I've stopped in the mayor's office on several occasions, and Wendy showed me all the binders and all the documents, all the files on our computer, and everything, like, everything, every dime is, she knows where, where it is, and, you know, I think someday if there's ever any kind of an audit, the federal government decides they wanna.
Yeah, right.
Really.
Exactly.
This lady, this lady is the taxpayer's watchdog.
Right, we're not gonna be on the hook, you know, down.
I saw her in the phone booth upstairs the other day, trying to get money, to see if anybody put any, I said, there's no phone book, there's no mon, there's no revenue from that.
Yeah, it's, 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 there's a lot of moving parts, and it's very important to keep good documents, and I know that Wendy's doing that, so thank you and be.
I feel bad for the communities in one sense that don't have the ability to put these things together, they just don't have the staff, or they don't have the, the, the team to put it together.
Right.
And, you know, they, they, they miss out, I mean, we were the first community to put our open space plan together in nineteen ninety, whatever it was, and we were just kept putting for grants and kept getting, nobody else had their plan approved, the communities didn't have the money to come up with, to hire somebody or staff to be able to put it together, and then, you know, quickly they realized, you're not gonna get any money unless that plan's done, and so they started hiring people, coming up with the money that was necessary, but, so.
Good job.
We have the team, so.
Council Frida?
Just to follow up on that, Mayor, I felt pretty proud to be able to say that I was from Leominster whenever, all the other communities were talking about not having anybody.
Yes.
And not being able to, to get through all of this when we're at those meetings.
It is.
I mean, it was, you know, so it was a good feeling to be able to say, well, my community's not in that kind of a problem right now, so.
Just for the, for the MEMA and FEMA from Manusnock Brook and the North Nashua, we never thought that two projects would be recommended, but just to show you how tough it is for communities, they had a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of sort of letters of intent to apply.
Yeah.
And so many people didn't make it that we got both projects recommended, that's, you know, it's kind of sad, but.
Yeah.
Good for us.
And on the capital plan, we'll submit it tomorrow morning to Caitlin, we didn't have the.
Yeah.
We'd made one change, so we didn't have the.
And just go through them, and if you want to start answering questions, it's just a lot in there.
Yeah.
But they did a good job of spreading it all, there's a, a numbering, a numerical system in place, so you can see it's a high priority, number one, you know, it goes all, it's self-explanatory, but if you have any questions, just.
Is this a capital improvement, like, that's required by charter, a five-year plan?
We do it every year, though.
Right.
Yeah, and we will, and, you know, it's very fluid, the priorities did come from the department heads, too, so we didn't assign the priorities, they did, but, you know, as Wendy said, she just this week got, or last week got a fire grant that's in the works, but, you know, those are on there, so, you know, we'll see if we get the money, then, you know, we'll shift, so it's a very, very fluid plan, but we, you know, as we said, we update it every year, so we wanna just get it out there.
Okay.
But if you have any questions, either call us or invite us back down.
Sounds good. And I think the last.
I was gonna say, on free cash, I submitted everything in December, it was approved, it was like mid-December, and it was approved in February, and I sent down the letter, I don't know if you've read it, or did you have any questions?
So the good news is, if you look at the bottom, at the top line, it's, it's like looking at your checking account, you open it up, but then later you cite other deductions, and you're like, uh-uh, they're kind of, but anyway, we did a breakdown of where the money was spent, do we have a slide on it?
I didn't, I, I didn't.
But everybody has a copy of.
Yeah, and, you know, it was a little higher this year, and the main reason was because there was a lot of one-time revenue that came in, departments did very well, too, they had almost a percent and a half more of a turnback this year, and some of that was, you know, we were able to utilize some ARPA funds, some other grant funds, so they were able to turn additional monies back to free cash, which, you know, you know, that will not continue to happen. that will not continue to happen. We had the big tax title sale that happened last year that was almost $1 million. The, we had a lot of people come in and pay catch-up payments, too, between tax titles themselves of people paying off and prior-year real estate bills. People came in and paid on old real estate bills, about $1 million of that, too. And so, that's, you know, they're just catching up on what their old--
Water sores or whatever.
Yep.
And remember, on there is a breakdown of what goes back to water and sewer. What goes back, we borrow from the stabilization account. You're always great about letting us borrow from that, and we replenish that. So--
Those are on the meeting tonight.
And we had a lot of sales of commercial or industrial real estate where they were either in arrears on, on tax payments, and before they can sell the property, have to come in and square up on water, sewer, real estate taxes, personal property, whatever it might be. So, a lot of it came from that. So, a lot happened in the last year.
Yeah.
So, it's a good thing, though.
I have a couple of questions, and it's just for some, for some clarity. So, on tonight's agenda, we have, so free cash was certified at $14,700,000, right? Tonight, we're taking $4 million of that, we're putting that into the stabilization account.
Yes.
Assuming that that's approved, we'll have a stabilization balance.
Replenish it back into it. Right, right.
Right, 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 right. So, we'll have a 20, almost $21 million in stabilization. So, how much, how much is in free cash after we take that $4 million out?
There would be about $10 million.
That's it. There's no balance in there that this was going back to because it had all been transferred.
No, it zeroes out at the end of every year. You cannot carry free cash forward from one year to the next.
Okay. All right. That's good. And one other thing, Jen, if you could, the letter that you sent, there's not a date on it, but you know which one it is because it's talking about free cash. Just those things, the increase in payments on property taxes. Could you just tell us, not now, but if you can just send us what the amounts were for each of those things?
Oh, sure.
So that we can ballpark, okay, that's, you know, seven or eight out of the 14 or whatever it is with water, sewer, and everything else.
Yep. I have the numbers if you want to. I can tell you.
Yeah, sure.
So, for the first one is the increase in property taxes. Like the mayor said, that was a lot of the sales and old payments. So, that was about $1 million. The increase on the tax title payments was about $400,000 hotel tax. That actually came back this year, not quite to pre-COVID numbers, but that was up $300,000 from last year.
That's good.
The increase in miscellaneous revenue was about $800,000, a little more than the next one, the overall charges for services. So, that's people coming in and doing building permits, the 38Ds, the rentals. All of that was starting to come back, and that was about $500,000 over last year. And the last one, the 2.3%, was about $1 million increase from last year that it went out for the turnbacks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
And we applaud that. You know, a lot of communities will, the trend will be at a certain point in the year is spend all the money out. Don't, you know, if you have money left over, that environment, and that's something John Richard started when he was here, and it continues on. It's, if you need it, you're gonna spend it. If you don't, you give it back. But you're more likely gonna get back from a free cash allocation later anyway for the specific use you wanted. You know, the old days of buying bundles of paper and stacking them up somewhere, and then, you know, two years later, it's still there, and it got wet, and it's no good to anybody, and the magic market's dried out. I mean, it's all these things that, that people used to do, and that doesn't, you know, happen anymore. So, that's, that's a, that's a big deal, and so you get that. To get those funds back that we can then reuse when we do our capital improvement account, so.
Yep.
It's good.
All right. Council Freedom?
I'm not sure if this is for Jen or Mayor.
Jen.
Whoever wants to try. The hotels, Hotel Six, and the Days Inn over by Friendly's. If the rumor holes, the properties are being acquired for homeless shelters. What happens to hotel taxes on that?
They go away. They go away.
They go away. So, whoever buys it and contracts with the state, they don't have to pay that?
It's not a hotel anymore.
They're not, yeah, they're not renting the rooms anymore.
So, thank you. I'm just, and you know what? We're, we do our job, and again, I can't emphasize this enough, we do it with your support. Trust me, it makes the biggest of biggest, you know, I mean, we had big shoes to fill when John left. John was good. John Richard was good at what he did. And Jen came along, and Jim, and we have almost all new people between the treasurer's office and the comptroller's office. And they basically had to start, you know, from where John was and replicate what John did over all these years. And the whole team, everybody, every department, everyone's working together. It is a fun experience, and to have such cooperation with the city council, honest, it is, it is like, it gets, it is a better service to the public. Things get done more professionally, and none of this could happen unless we had your support along the way. So, we don't want to minimize that at all. It's 100% your support that allows us to do our job and get it done. You ask a lot of tough questions. People might not see it here, but behind the scenes, there are a lot of tough questions that we get asked. We should answer those. We should make sure you get all the answers and that you're satisfied, so we can get your support. So, I don't want anybody that watches these meetings to think it's just some sort of a big, you know, rubber stamp. We bring it down, it gets, there are a lot of thorough, either subcommittee meetings or questions that we get routinely, asking us tough questions to kind of rip everything apart, put it back together so it's understandable. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We don't mind at all. Makes for a thousand, it makes for such a better process, and it makes for good government.
Council Bedanzi--
I don't want to belabor the, I don't want to belabor the point, but just real quick, Jen, I know when I used to work with John, that he indicated Moody's had a certain percentage, they, sort of target percentage they liked to see on a stabilization fund versus the budget. You know what that number is today?
What our percentage is?
I know what our percentage is, but what is, what does Moody's recommend? I know, I know it's kind of a sort of pie in the sky type of thing, but--
Yeah, it's changed a little bit, but it's 18 to 26%, and we're on the lower--
18%?
Yeah, we're on the lowest end. I think we--
But we're, we're in the range.
We are. We're at about 20%.
Yeah, there aren't too many people that meet Moody's--
Right, I know that. I know that, yeah. But I know we're an exception.
Yeah, and they do definitely consider it. We had to go out for the bond for the police station, and then we just did the ban for the second half of the police station. We'll bond it next year, so we had to have a rating for both. And that is, you know, definitely something that goes in our favor, that we are at least in their acceptable range. We just need to keep it there.
Imagine having $21 million, that's not enough.
For the public ban as a borrowing in anticipation of a note?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
No, imagine that, though. You have $21 million in stabilization, you have free cash, you have a single tax rate, the really competitive one, and it's still, and they look and say, well, you need, you know, another 5% of your total revenues to--
Yep.
To be in your stabilization account. We'll get there.
Thank you, Jen.
We'll get there.
May I, real quick, to you and your staff, listen, it's a two-way street. Thank you for complimenting the council, but I gotta tell you, when I have constituent issues, I call Michelle--
You have a lot of those.
I do. I'm a busy guy. But your team is--
Oh, we don't mind. I'm just--
You respond promptly, and everybody does, and so it makes it so much easier, and people are really happy when you get right back.
We don't have your name in our phones. We just already know what it is. It's you. We already know it.
So, thank you. Like I said, it's a two-way street. We, 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 we all need to work together to make this run smoothly and give people the service that they deserve, so.
We sure do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, again, on the capital improvements, whatever, email us if you want another meeting, a bunch of questions. We're glad to come down and--
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, guys, very--
And a lot of those things came from you, you know, things that you asked us about.
Okay. Okay, so we are, we're running a little behind. If you are here for a interview, please be patient. We're gonna get to you in just a moment. But we do have a public hearing that was supposed to be at 6:40 PM on 17-23. It does, it's partially owned by my employer, so as usual, I'm going to abstain. But Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, this is your, your hearing.
Yep. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing for petition 17-23. I'm the Sue Shalfo Zephyr, Chair of the Public Service Committee. Counselor Claire Frieder is on the committee, as well as Councilor Bill Brady. So, 17-33, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, in Verizon, New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Chalmers Street, national pole to install one jointly-owned pole on Chalmers Street and relocate one jointly-owned pole on Chalmers Street, beginning at a point approximately 35 feet west of the center line at the intersection of Hoover Street and continuing approximately 10 feet in north direction. Install pole number 15-02 to reconfigure services to house and sag, and reduce sag and overhead lines. Location approximately is shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraised that after due notice and hearing is provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith marked Chalmers Street, Leominster, Massachusetts. We had a public service, a public hearing on January 23rd and February 13th. Is there anybody here from National Grid? There were several questions. I don't see anybody here from National Grid. We did get an email that indicated that they were going back to the design drawing board, correct? So, at this point, because of the design, they're coming up with a new design, my recommendation would be to close this public hearing, and we will take up the proposal when it comes back in with a new plan design. So, is, there's anybody in the public that would like to speak about this? Please come to the microphone. I don't see anybody speaking on this. So, I will declare the public hearing closed.
So, the public hearing is closed, and you're, just to, just to clarify--
Mm-hmm.
And it'll be, we will bring the matter up again when National Grid comes in with a new proposal.
They'll come in with a new petition. So, we'll just treat it, the redesign is completely new and separate.
Okay. So, officially, the public hearing is closed, and I'm gonna turn it back over to President Cormier.
Thank you very much. We now have a 6:45 PM interview with the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can report, it was reported to me earlier today that Suzanne Kohler was a little, was a bit under the weather, so she was not going to make it in today. But everyone should, excuse me, have a copy of her resume enclosed with their packet. And is Mr., I'm gonna pronounce this right, Piscione? Mark Piscione? And we have no word from him whether or not he will, okay. I would ask then, then, Mr. President, that we extend a, extend an invitation out to both of them to come in for an interview again.
Sure.
I know that we are a little later on the agenda, putting on a couple of interviews for next meeting. Per, you know, perhaps we can just add them in as well.
Okay. All right. And we have an interview that was supposed to happen at 6:50 PM.
And this is Robert C. Card. Mr. C. Card, if you'd like to come in the-- What do you call it? I call it a bar.
The chambers.
In the chambers. Mr. C. Card, welcome. I'm Pauline Cormier. I am the Chairwoman of the Ways and Means Committee, and the other members of my committee, to my left is Councilor Frank Gardinger, who is the clerk, and directly across from me is Councilor Sue Shalfo Zephyr, who is the third member of this. And we want to welcome you. And so, this is Dean J. Mazarella, requests the appointment of Robert C. Card, 261 Granite Street, Leominster, to the Conservation Commission, term to expire April 15, 2026. Mr. C. Card, this is your opportunity to tell us a little bit about yourself, a little bit about where you're from and your background, and what interests you in being on the Conservation Commission.
Yes, I've moved to Leominster, possibly 32 years ago, built a house up on Granite Street, and have been the beneficiary of President, past councils for a glorious run, I think, for me, my family, and citizens of Leominster. Just a caring, hard-hearted athlete here. People have done a fantastic job, diligence, hard work, everything, cooperation with the mayor's office. You can see it here tonight. So, again, I thank you for that. Get back to me. I'm going to be 69 in a couple weeks. Had a lovely career of, well, still, I tried to retire a month ago, a few years ago, and it didn't work out too good. But I had been 47 years now, grown up 47 years, still in 40, working away, 47 anyway. Let's see.
What did you, what did you do for work? What do you do for work?
Well, I'm a scientist of air quality, you know, air emissions, air toxic specialists. In fact, Constellation Energy was one of my clients for many, many years. I was, I was the person who run in the mobile laboratory and stuck the probe in the sacks for their new power plants that the federal government, I gave the okay to, you know, your permits are okay, your emissions are in line, and flipped the switch from putting money into the plant to that they could now produce power. Most of my clients were big players like that, as well as pharmaceutical industry, you know, a lot of government contracts still now with the State Department, US State Department, around the world, all the US embassies. I've installed, designed, fabricated, installed, air marketing, the US embassies around the world, 70 from now. John Carrick's program with EPA Director came fruition for years, and now we're seeing the benefits of it. Peter B. had some good points there. He was right on the money with his analysis of the gas lines coming up here. You know, we're choked off because of that. And just to give you a little insight on CO2, CO2 production in the power industry, coal operates the boilers. They operate it, you know, 4%, 5% oxygen, and the rest of that makeup goes to 15 or 13%, 15% CO2. But a power turbine or a gas combustion runs at 15% oxygen and only 3% to 3.5% CO2 emissions. And this is, this is a big flow constantly, every day of the year, you know, comes out. So, that's, that's the big difference from each power, you know, that you produce. You know, and most gas production is an engine. It's not only a boiler anymore, it's an engine. GE or Pratt &amp; Whitney that turns a, you know, power generator at the end. And from that, they throw it up a duck, the feeders in it, and create more steam through water pipes. And then we'll turn a steam turbine, which is called coal generation, very quickly. I'm involved with a new plant out on the Connecticut border that has three, the new three F7, 7F turbines that can burn hydrogen now, too. But they can go from a zero state to 400 megawatts in 11 minutes. And they use a lot of gas, too. But it's, it's been a very interesting career for me, you know, over the years. I've worked with all of the Army Armed Services, tested power turbines for the Navy, pulled up in Navy shipyard, then to the National Missile Defense, out in the Kwajalein Atoll on the Marshall Islands, working on power systems out there. Deer Island, wastewater treatment plant, I developed the numbers for gear control facilities out there, improved them after we built systems for them out there. Spent a lot, a lot of different avenues with air toxics, you know. I spent 30 years in Puerto Rico getting them cleaned up. And I volunteered at St. Leo's, too, through COVID, bringing up the lunches on carts to the cafeteria. You know, they never stopped. They kept going. Through, all through COVID, those kids were in school, which I thought was a good team, a good accomplishment at the time. And like this team here, too, you know, you, you can, I mean, we're reap the benefits of it. Very, very proud of the Bible, so.
So, is there anything in particular that the City of Leominster, that you find that, that the city could improve on?
Well, a lot of people, I don't think realize that whatever they put down their washing machines, their dishwashers, their toilets, ends up in the Nashville River over there. Everything goes to House of the Air. It's a, it's a, it's been a, you know, a career of me seeing all that process, how it happens, and educating the public, what you can do. You know, whatever you throw in, it, it ends up in-- You know, whatever you throw in, it ends up in the river over there. A lot of people don't, well, how does that do that? You know, it's millions of gallons a day, gets disinfected, you know, solids taken out, but it ends up in the river. Leominster, I mean, Ray Racine's done a fabulous job. DPW, you know, I'm fired about this stuff. All really good compliments all the way around, I think. And I, I just want to help out Nick, you know, not really my avenue, but I've done a lot of wastewater, you know, I'm an H2S specialist, actually. I'm very fortunate to be mentored by a lot of good people through my years, you know. Yeah, I've destroyed chemical weapons down in Mississippi. There are some, you know, I do the emissions from there. I've done so many different things and I've had so much good knowledge acquired. Actually, the power plant up in the end of the Connecticut, they, they bring their instruments to my house down in Leominster. I fix it, then they come and get them. They, they have to be under two parts per million of NOx, nitric oxides. Ammonia, they inject ammonia into them to reduce the NOx numbers. CO is practically zero. Beautiful running machine. And actually, we're very fortunate, because I was born out of the acid rain days of the 70s. A lot of government contracts for measuring ambient acid rain deposition for, you know, the, you know, the stagger, all that. We would be the recipients from the Midwest, you know, with all that combustion. Done a lot of coal, a lot of scrubbers, new scrubbers that, you know, helped the coal industry. But they just got the bad rap now because we've got so much gas around. My son-in-law actually is developing the next generation of nuclear reactors in Idaho. He's an actual lab in Idaho. A lot of people don't realize that there's a 10, 20, and 30-year plan to, you know, develop nuclear power. And the guy that was sitting in my seat before me, he was right. It's bureaucratic. It's just the government takes so long. It's just stagnating. Although we are building three, I think, in the country now, South Carolina, Georgia. But we've exhausted all of the 30-year ones that we had. Anyway, I just wanted to say that, too, I realized, too, that because of my travel and my clients that I have, I don't feel that I have any conflict of interest in the city. I think I bring a lot of common sense that I've learned. My dust tray is my patience, my patience. And hard work, just hard work. Nick called me before I came today and he said, well, we're still going to have our meeting tomorrow. You know, he's okay with that. Because I'll be there, and I'll be in your room, too, you know. Like I was tonight, too. My clients know that.
Well, Mr. Seckard, I believe that you and Counselor Angelini are going to be fast friends here. But I'm going to open this up for questions of any other members of the council. And actually, I'm going to go to members of the Ways and Means Committee. Counsel Arndinger?
Thank you, Mr. Seckard. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the compliments you're laying on the council tonight. It's real nice to hear that.
Lovely to hear.
I am impressed with your background. And I agree that you and Mr. Angelini are going to have a lot of talks. And you, your background and the people that we interviewed for recent appointments to the Conservation Commission are going to give us one fantastic Conservation Commission. I think it's Mr. T. P. L. His background is, you know, very impressive also. And, you know, it's just going to be a good mix of people up there to protect our air, water, soil, everything in the city. So thank you very much for that, Pauline. You certainly have my vote.
Thank you, sir.
And Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, you know, for stepping up to volunteer because Conservation Commission, it's just the, it's complex. You know, the issues that come before the Conservation Commission, Counselor Angelini and I have been around, you know, with the Conservation Commission a few times. So the issues, they're complex. They can have severe impact. I mean, we are talking about water supply, but we also are talking about, you know, people's homes and their neighborhoods and the infrastructure that, you know, does or sometimes does not, you know, work appropriately. So it's a, it's, you know, it's so nice to have, you know, people with backgrounds like yourself, the education, the training, the interest, you know, to do this because it's, I think it's tough work on the Conservation Commission. And it's very detailed, and I'm glad that you are patient and persistent because those will serve you well, certainly on the commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Bob. Has it been long enough? Can I tell the story?
Sure.
All right. I haven't seen Bob for probably 30 years, maybe. But Counselor Zephyr and Counselor Bedanza in particular will appreciate this. When we were all trying to preserve our water supply at No Town, we were all actively engaged in that battle. My friend Bob was behind the scenes, helping me with some, some data that was very important. He was measuring stacks at the time and probably would have gotten a lot of trouble, or maybe a little bit of trouble, if his employer found out. I don't know. That's just, that's my take. But he was very helpful. I know his heart's in the right place. He's always been a clean water, clean air advocate. And we couldn't find a better guy. And sorry, I'm glad to hear that you're retiring. And I hope you hit your target date of 70. And I hope you're with the Conservation Commission for a couple of decades because we could use you. Thank you so much for volunteering, Bob. We really appreciate it and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Any other members of the council? Counsel Bedanza?
Just a quick thank you for stepping forward and volunteering. The city really is benefiting from so much expertise that's out there and people's willingness to serve. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Seckard, thank you very much for coming in. And if you hold on for a few minutes here, we're going to have a, since you've already been here so long, we're going to have a vote shortly. And it would be my pleasure to, to make that recommendation, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are now going to hold the public forum, which was scheduled for 6:55 PM. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding to or answering any questions. However, the discretion of Council President clarification may be given. Nobody has signed up at this point. So I will ask, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I now declare the public forum closed. And we will now stand back in session. And we will move right into communications from the mayor, beginning with C-47, Madam Clerk.
C-47, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $12,000 to be made to the City Council Advertising Account, the same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C-47 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
C-47 is being given regular course. C-48.
C-48, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that the City Council accept Orchard Hill Park Extension. See Leominster City Council Orchard Hill Park Drive Extension as attached.
C-48 is referred to the Chairman of Finance. I'm sorry, the Chairman of Legal Affairs. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is regular course. I have a couple of referrals. Planning Board, please, and DPW. And also, could you see that the applicant gets us some engineered-sized plans? I found the plan very difficult to read. I mean, obviously, plans for everyone would be ideal. If that's, if they can't do that for whatever reason, perhaps a couple sets that we could leave in the clerk's office and people could make appointments to come in and review them down here at their leisure.
Sure.
Okay, so regular course with a referral to DPW.
And
The planning board.
And the planning board. And ask for an set of engineering-sized plans so that we can clearly see them, okay? All right, C-49.
C-49, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that the City Council grant the order of taking in relation to the extension of Orchard Hill Park Drive. See order of taking as attached.
And C-49 is also referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First time on the calendar, regular course. And with the same referrals, Planning Board and DPW. And any plans as well?
Okay, so C-49 will be given regular course with a referral to the Planning Board, DPW, and also larger-size plans, if we could request those. Moving on to C-50.
C-50, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $4 million to be made to the Stabilization Fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account, undesignated fund balance.
C-50 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course, please.
C-50 is given regular course. C-51.
C-51, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $382,351.90 to be made to the Water Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C-51 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C-51 has been given regular course. C-52.
C-52, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $902,226.56 to be made to the Sewer Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C-52 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course, please.
C-52 has been given regular course. Moving on to appointments.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request the appointment of the following individual to the Leominster Housing Authority, term to expire 4/15/2026. Yah Asante Ado, 20C Crossman Avenue, Leominster, Mass.
And this appointment is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, Mr. President, with a request for an interview on March 13, 2023, at 6:45 PM.
Okay, so that has been given regular course. And Madam Clerk will set up an interview with this individual, hopefully for March 13 at 6:45 PM, if they're available.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request the appointment of the following individual to the Cultural Commission, term to expire 4/15/2026. Matthew Valeri, 92 Keenland Circle, Leominster, Mass.
And this appointment is also referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a request for an interview on March 13, 2023, at 6:50 PM.
Okay, and this interview is also given regular course. Interview on March 13 at 6:50 PM, that Madam Clerk will set up as well. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, 19-23.
19-23, William Brady, Ward One Counselor, request to amend Chapter 13 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section 13-34, no parking on certain streets by inserting the following, no parking on lock drive on both sides for the entirety of the street.
And 19-23 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have a ongoing business relationship with someone who owns property that a butts lock drive. So I'm going to recuse myself from this and ask the number two
Counsel Bedanza? Okay, Counsel Bedanza?
Thank you, Mr. President. 19-23, first time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the Traffic Bureau. That should take care of that.
Okay, so 19-23 is being given regular course. So we refer this to the Traffic Division at the Police Department?
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on to 20-23, Madam Clerk.
20-23, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Litchfield Street, National Grid to install one solely old pole on Litchfield Street, beginning at a point approximately 630 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Elm Hill Ave and continuing approximately 20 feet in a western direction. Install one 45-foot class HI pole to support a load brake switch to de-energize the primary conductor in the location of the upcoming culvert construction by the Leominster DPW. Location approximately is shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark Litchfield Street, Leominster, Massachusetts, number 303-782-59, February 9, 2023. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by exclusively for municipal purposes.
Okay, and 20-23 will be referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Mm-hmm. Regular course, Mr. President, with referrals to the DPW.
Okay. And 20-23 has been given regular course with a referral to the DPW. 21-23.
21-23, Peyton's Flea Market, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 107 Union Street.
And 21-23 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm reviewing, and perhaps the clerk can clarify. It looks like we still have some outstanding referrals.
The police chief sent it over, or he's going to be sending it over tomorrow in person. So that's the only outstanding item left for it, and then it will be all set for our next meeting.
Okay, so regular course, Mr. President.
All right, we'll give this regular course. So 21-23 has been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the City Council. Mr. Chairman of Finance, do you have a financial report?
I do, Mr. President. Oh, that's fine.
Oh, sure. Yeah, move the appointment up to the top. Absolutely. Thank you very much for bringing that to my attention. All right, so first, before we get to the financial report, we're going to move to items under Ways and Means, under appointments. And Madam Clerk, I'll let you handle them now. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'll let you handle them now.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the request, we had an interview this evening with Mr. Seckard for his appointment to the Conservation Commission. I believe that we were all very impressed with his background, the work that he's done. And I think that he's going to be a great contributor and a member of the Conservation Commission. So I would ask that he be appointed, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, Counsel Arndinger?
I agree.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to appoint Robert Seckard of 261 Granite Street to the Conservation Commission. Is there any discussion? If none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Bedanza.
Yay.
Counsel Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yay.
Counsel Angelini?
Yay.
Counsel Brady?
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counsel Deacon?
Yay.
Counsel Frida?
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. Seckard has been appointed and confirmed to the Conservation Commission. Thank you very much. And I know they're not here, and we're probably going to give them further time. But if you'd like to just do those last two, Madam Chairwoman, and then we'll be done with the appointments for the evening.
Certainly, as neither, neither Mr. Piscione, I'm thinking it is?
Sure.
And, and Ms. Kohler were unable to make it this evening. I would ask that these be, these be continued and we extend an invitation for interviews.
Okay, Counsel Arndinger, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr as well?
Yes.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to give further time to these two appointments. If there, is there any discussion? Seeing none, are those in favor of giving further time to these two appointments, signifying usual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. We have been given further time to those two appointments. We will now move to the financial report. Mr. Chairman?
There you go. So we began the fiscal year on July 1 with a balance in the stabilization account of $20,675,366. We have transferred in by way of interest earnings during the course of the fiscal year, And we have on our agenda this evening for final action at our next meeting, a transfer in from free cash or the excess and deficiency account of $4 million. That would bring our balance to $24,000,000. bring our balance to twenty-four million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. However, during the course of the fiscal year, we have spent three million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars, leaving a final balance of twenty million, nine hundred and four thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That's the stabilization account. As you heard from the comptroller earlier this evening, free cash has been certified for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-two at fourteen million, seven hundred and two thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars. We have three items on our agenda this evening, actually four, transfers out of that excess and deficiency account or free cash, which would leave, if they're all approved, and they, two of them are water and sewer, which we always put back what they had left unspent at the end of the year. One of them you just heard was four million dollars, going back to the money we borrowed from stabilization, and one of them is twelve thousand dollars for the Clerk's office. Assuming all those are approved at our next meeting, that'll leave a balance in the excess and deficiency account of nine million, four hundred and five thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And, Mr. President, that is the financial report.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions or comments in the financial report? Seeing none, we will move right into items in the finance, beginning with C dash forty-two. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C dash forty-two, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request an appropriation of three hundred, I'm sorry, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars be made to the Cemetery Capital Prior Year Building Rehab Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Account. This project has been on the sort of planning stage for a number of years, and when it's been finally bid, and the bid ended up because of the passage of time, being a little bit more than what was encumbered in this account from year to year to pay for the rehab of the administration building at the Evergreen Cemetery. The building is not handicapped, accessible, that is going to change with this work. They're going to redo the bathroom and make it handicapped, accessible. They're going to redo the flooring and some other upgrades to the building. So this amount is the difference between what has been encumbered in the DPW budget over the years to get this work done and what the bid came in at. Just to let you know, the current balance of the perpetual care account as of December thirty-one, which is the most up-to-date figure I could get, was seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars, and transferred in during fiscal twenty-two by way of interest was a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. This is something that really needs to be done. I talked to the DPW Director today. He could actually recall a situation where a person who was handicapped that needed access to that office really had to be carried in there by their loved one. We really don't want that happening in our city. So it would be my strong position, Mr. President, to grant C dash forty-two. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
And Counsel Angelini.
Be difficult to not support that passionately, so I'll make it unanimous.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash forty-two. Is there any discussion? Counsel Frida.
Through the chair of the Finance Chair, this is the administration building, right? Not the chapel?
That's correct, the administration building.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or comment? Seeing none, are those in favor of granting C dash forty-two signify unusual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash forty-two has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars be appropriated to the Cemetery Capital Building Rehab Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Heard the request for the adoption of the order. Are those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order for C dash forty-two has been adopted. C dash forty-three.
C dash forty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request an appropriation of nine thousand dollars be made to the Police Department Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. This is a request by Chief of Police attached to the letter sent here by the mayor, is a invoice for software from an organization called TIP four-one-one. I had a chance to speak to the police chief over the weekend about this program. This essentially is the, is a sort of updated, renewed, you know, supercharged Crime Stoppers program. This is state-of-the-art. The Police Department had this demonstrated. The chief, or more significant part of this is, unlike the Crime Stoppers program, this has an interactive component, so the citizens can actually interact with the police and exchange information and questions back and forth. The police chief was very favorable about this particular software. Obviously, we want to support our Police Department as much as we can, especially with criminal investigation and keeping our community safe for a relatively small amount of money. It seems quite worth the investment, Mr. President. It'd be my position to grant C dash forty-three. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Counsel Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash forty-three. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, are those in favor of granting C dash forty-three signify unusual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash forty-three has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, order that the sum of nine thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Are those in favor of adopting the order, signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order for C dash forty-three has been adopted. Moving on to C dash forty-four.
C dash forty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request an appropriation of seven thousand, one hundred dollars be made to the Collective Bargain Contract Services Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Account. This is regarding an assessment center for the police chief. Again, I spoke with the police chief over the weekend about this. This, of course, is a methodology of hiring. As you know, long ago, we requested that a home rule petition to take the chief and captain out of the civil service system, which was finally granted by the legislature. And this is now the process to hire a permanent police chief, and this is a company called MMA, not to be confused with the Mass Municipal Association, but Mark Morris Associates, that will come up and create a sort of a protocol and testing or analysis of candidates for the police chief job, and this is part of the process of obtaining a permanent appointment to that job, and it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C dash forty-four. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counsel Cormier.
I support it as well.
And Counsel Angelini.
I'll make it a unanimous recommendation, Mr. President.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash forty-four. Is there any discussion? Counsel Frida.
Through the chair of the Finance Chair, has our home rule petition passed?
Yes.
House and Senate?
Yes.
We got no notification of that?
I learned of it from the chief. That's where I learned of it.
I'd like to see something in writing. I mean, this has been going on for a couple of years.
Yes.
I'd like to see that decision in writing.
Okay.
If we get it from Representative Higgins or Senator Cronin, I think we need to see that.
Be a likely place to go.
Okay, well, Madam Clerk.
I'll get it. I haven't seen it yet, so I'll go ask them for it.
I'm surprised that we haven't gotten anything. I mean, that's been a request of ours for a long time.
It has. It goes back.
And we get no, no information.
I was surprised to learn that from the chief, so, like you.
And any other discussion, Counsel Shalfers-Effer?
Right, right. Part of that, that discussion also involved the captain's position as well.
Yeah, the captain's position will, there'll be an assessment center coming up for that in the budget for fiscal twenty-three.
So it'll be up to July?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion on C dash forty-four? Seeing none, are those in favor of granting C dash forty-four signify unusual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash forty-four has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of seven thousand, one hundred dollars be made or appropriated to the Collective Bargain Contract Services Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Are those in favor of adopting the order, signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order for C dash forty-four has been adopted. We have one item for ratification, which we accepted as suspension of the rules and introduced as an emergency preamble at the last meeting, which was C dash forty-six. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report for ratification?
Sure. C dash forty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars be made to the Building Department Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. As you said, Mr. President, at our last meeting, this was taken up as a emergency preamble. Under the terms of our charter, even though we approved it as an emergency preamble at the last meeting, we have to ratify that vote this evening. It would be my position, given the, you know, significance of this problem and its attachment to public safety, that we ratify our vote over the prior meeting, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Counsel Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to ratify C dash forty-six. Is there any discussion? Counsel Frida.
Through the chair of the Finance Chair, do we have any indication that the owner is going to pay for this? He had fifteen days to respond.
I would, I wouldn't hold my breath. From the knowledge I've gotten from discussions I've had with the fire chief in particular, I'm not sure that that's our reality. Of course, the property will be leaned. It's a real problem because, you know, there's a, they're not, the entire building is not coming down.
Right.
The property has some questionable attributes, let's say, and the ability of the current owner to pay this amount is not likely, highly likely, from what I'm told, and what will happen with that property in the future, I am not sure. So unfortunately, or fortunately, human health trumps the finances involved here, and we've got no choice but to keep the public safe.
And as a side.
And I don't disagree with it, but it's an awful precedent to be setting.
Yeah, I understand. We've been in this position before, and it's unfortunate, but like I said, the public safety comes first.
I agree.
So.
And as a side note, I also believe there's a lot of back taxes due as well, so things aren't good with this property.
No.
It's not looking good for the city. Well, you know, we can leave it there, or we can, we'll have to deal with it, I think eventually. I think it'll be back down the road.
Could be.
Okay, is there any other discussion, comments? Seeing none, are those in favor of granting C dash forty-six signify unusual manner? Those opposed, by a vote of C, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash forty-six, the ratification has been approved. Moving on to items into legal affairs, C dash forty-one, Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C dash forty-one, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request that the council authorize inappropriate departments, department, departments to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses in the city, and for other related services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the same. As you're aware, this was first on our calendar and given regular course back in January twenty-third of this year. It was given further time on the thirteenth of February. As the mayor, one of the mayor's guests was unable to make that meeting. So as, as I'm sure you all recall, a little early this evening, we would beneficiaries of an informational meeting where Mr. O'Rourke made his presentation on aggregating electricity for residents of the city. I must say, to be quite honest, I have a lot of questions about this, not particularly about the program, but how it's going to be received by my constituents. I'd like to, I'd like to really give this some, some additional time and give myself, and I'm sure others may feel the same way, go out and talk to people in the community and get some thoughts on this, because I have, I have my own views, but it may be different from what other people are thinking. One thing that I think is kind of, will be an issue with a lot of people is that opting out. Like, you're going to be, if you're not under contract, you're going to be in this program, and, you know, you might throw away the notice, you might misplace it. So I'd just like to go out and sort of get some feedback from my constituents and people in the community before I move ahead with it. So that would be my recommendation, Mr. President, but I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, so what is your recommendation for further time?
Further time.
Okay, Counsel, Counsel Badanza.
Yeah, I have similar feelings to the Ward Five Counselor, and given the fact that the representative of the proposed company suggested that DPU might take two years to approve it, I don't think there's any particular rush to judgment here. I also am looking at the language of the petition, it's very broad, and, you know, I totally trust the administration to negotiate a good contract for us, but I, you know, at some point, I may want to take a look at what, what we're looking at in terms of a pro forma agreement or the particulars of this whole thing. So I too, I'm in no rush to do this tonight, so I, I'm in accord with further time.
And Counsel Deacon.
I'm in agreement as well. I've done some research for my own residents just over the past couple of months, and I actually spoke to Counsel Cormier about this, and there's so many options out there, and the opt-in or opting out. I think our residents need to be educated even further on this, so I'm in agreement with further time, for sure.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give C dash forty-one further time. Is there any discussion? Counsel Shalfers-Effer.
Yep, thank you very much. I, I agree that the, the way that everything is worded is very, very vague, so I would also like to see specific, more specifics on an agreement. I do think because the, precisely because the DPU, Department of Public Utilities, is taking so long, I'd like to get this moving as quickly as possible. I'll go along with further time, as long as it's on the next agenda. So through the chair of the Legal Affairs Chairperson, do you think that you'd be able to gather the information that you're looking for for the next meeting?
I'd be perfectly honest with you, to the at-large, through the chair, to the at-large counselor, I'd like this, I'd like two meetings. I think I'm on, on this.
Well, why don't you have a subcommittee meeting between now and then to, to get the work done?
All right.
And then we.
That's not a bad idea. I'll check with members of my committee, not this evening, but.
Okay.
On and off night, we'll come up with something, figure out how to deal with this. But I, I just, I need to, I need to get out and talk to people about this, and, and I need to do some more research. So I need, I'm just not comfortable. We got, we got quite a bit in our play between the, some of the accepting streets, and we got a lot of review for, for that, which, you know, there's a lot of other stuff that we got to research in the next couple of weeks. So that's why I asked for two meetings, but that would be my recommendation.
I think it needs to appear on the agenda the next time as well. We can just very quickly further time it, but, yeah, it, it has to, unless we table it, it's going to appear on the agenda the next meeting, and then we can just quickly further time it and, you know.
If that's, that's fine.
Okay.
You know, through the chair to the Legal Affairs Chairperson, Gardner has had this in place since two thousand seventeen. So I think it's been a big hit with Gardner residents, so you might want to touch base with, Mike Nicholson's the mayor up there, I think he knows a lot about it. I think he was on the council when it was being implemented. I think Mark Hawk was the mayor, but I think Mike was still around. And then also, the city of Fitchburg has started the process. I think they started in two thousand nineteen, and it's taking a long time. So I personally, you know, based on what I've seen lately, think it's a big plus for people in the city and businesses in the city as well. So, you know, everybody needs to, you know, satisfy their own, you know, the questions that everybody has. But, yeah, I'd like to keep this going, keep it moving.
Now, my fear is that if you, if you, if you put ten people on the street right now, no one would have any idea.
They wouldn't. No, 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 I don't think they would, and that's why a big part of what this company does is they educate people. It's like a marketing campaign. It's like, you know, like the mayor was saying, you have to tell people about it. I mean, and it was, you know, at Ginny's, which we just changed to Constellation, it was, you know, kind of hard to come to that because it was confusing, and, but, you know, figured it out, and on last month's bill, saved a bunch of money. So, I mean, I understand, I have questions too. I definitely want to see a more detailed agreement instead of this kind of broad blanket power, you know, for the mayor to do whatever he wants, but I'd like to keep it going.
Most people I know want to be educated before we, you know, before we adopt it. I don't feel comfortable with the voting and something, going out, trying to educate people.
They don't have to.
At that point, we've already committed them to the program.
No, but, but they can opt out. I mean, we haven't really committed. I mean, what we've done is give people the opportunity to sign up for something that will save them money, and they don't have to. I understand, I. I understand, I, I understand people's concerns about opt-in, but I also understand from a business perspective that that's the way that, you know, aggregators do it, because otherwise they'd have nothing to negotiate with. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, everybody can, you know, ask their questions, get them satisfied, but again, I'd like to keep it rolling.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Brady, did I see your hand as well?
Yes, thank you. I don't disagree with the further time on this. If someone wants to opt in on their own right now, they could do it tomorrow. So I understand the reason not to have to push it through and to satisfy people's, all the questions before we vote for it, because like you said, once it's voted, the process is going to take over. But just so people know, they can sign up for themselves right now.
Counselor, Agent Arndinger?
Yeah, thank you. Just, just a comment, you know, we talked about Pittsburgh having already implemented this, and I've heard some comments from some residents of Pittsburgh, they felt that they were forced into this, they didn't really understand that they had the ability to opt out, and so I would, you know, I think I agree with the mayor that people don't pay attention to their utility bill, but maybe it's not our job to, I don't know, be big brother for them, and, but maybe at the same time, we have to somehow educate them that they can, there are a number of programs in, as the Counselor across from me, you mentioned, you know, Constellation is actually less expensive than this, and if the people opt or put into this program, they may never look at something else like that. So I think further time is certainly warranted.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? You know, I'll just add as well that maybe we could ask the mayor's office if we were to do something like this, that we come up with a letter, a letter that gets sent out in tax bills that explains some of this as well. I know we have other letters that go out with bills as well, about open space and various things, so, you know, that's an idea as well, that we come up with some kind of a letter that's not too lengthy so we don't lose our audience, but gets to the point and explains to people, you know, what, what this all means to them as well.
The Ward Councils, I think, may get some call, and if people find out after the fact-
Yeah.
I could be mistaken.
All right. Is there any other discussion on C-41? So the, the recommendation on the floor is to give C-41 further time. All those in favor of further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-41 has been given further time. Moving on to items under Public Service, once again, 17-23, I do need to abstain because this is partially owned by my employer, so I'm going to step out, and, but I guess this is going to be referred to the, the Chair of Public Service.
17-23, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Chalmers Street, National Grid to install one jointly owned pole on Chalmers Street and relocate-
We've got to move to wave their reading, this has already been read once tonight, I don't, Madam Clerk, we have to read this again.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So we did have a, there was a public hearing earlier this evening, and no representative from National Grid came. We do have correspondence that indicates that National Grid will come back with a new design for this particular street, so my recommendation at this point is to give this petition leave to withdraw, and I would ask that you poll my committee.
Leave to withdraw without prejudice?
Without, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, Paulie.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I agree with that.
I'm in agreement also.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant 17-23 leave to withdraw. All those in favor, please signal in the usual manner by a vote of eight to zero. This 17-
It is without prejudice.
Has been granted, leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to page eight, we have still a couple of items under Ways and Means, and the first is an appointment continued. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report?
Leave, I am, Mr. President. This is Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the City Council approve the attached membership of the School Board Committee for the Fallbrook Elementary School, and everybody should have attached with, this is the list of individuals who is nominated to be on this board, and it would be my recommendation that these appointments be granted, and Madam Clerk, do we, we don't need to read everyone's individual name, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee, please.
Okay, Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
And Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
I'm sorry, Ways and Means, Counselor Shalfo, I apologize, we're on Ways and Means, Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr?
I agree.
Okay, all right, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the mayor's request for the attached membership of the school building committee for Fallbrook Elementary School. Is there any discussion? Counselor Badanza?
Are you going to do this in roll call, or are you going to?
No, I was just going to-
Okay, so I, I, at this point, then I would suggest that, because I'm one of the proposed appointees, that I am going to recuse myself from a vote on my own appointment to the committee, but not anybody else's.
Okay, all right, Counselor Angelini?
Mr. President, I will be using the same technique, I will be abstaining from voting for myself.
Okay.
But I will vote for the remainder of the appointees that were sent down by the mayor.
Okay. Counselor Deacon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to recuse myself as well as my spouse's superintendent of schools.
Okay.
On her selection, thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Badanza, Counselor Angelini is recusing themselves from their own, and Counselor Deacon from his wife. Counselor Freedom, I see your hand as well?
Yeah, at this point, I think it's important to let the public know who is on that list. I would suggest that the, the names be read before we vote.
Okay. Would you like to do that, Madam Chairwoman?
Certainly, I'd be there.
Since we have a request thing.
I'm just going to say that these are broken into five different categories. The first is the designation, the name and title of the individual, their address. I'm not going to read their email address and phone number.
No, just the names, I think, is fine.
Okay. Name and title would be Greg Chaplin, purchasing agent. Dean Mazzarella, Mayor, would be the Chair. The administrator or manager would be Dean Mazzarella, Mayor. School committee member would be Greg Thomas and Brandon Robbins. Superintendent of Schools is Paula Deacon. Local official responsible for building maintenance would be Elliot Nato as the Facilities Director. Representative of Office authorized by law to construct school buildings, Dean Mazzarella, Mayor. School principal, Jeffrey Sullivan, is principal. Member knowledgeable in education mission and function of facility would be Stephen Momoni, Assistant Superintendent. Local budget official or member of local finance committee would be Jennifer Reddington, our comptroller. Member of community with architecture and engineering and/or construction experience, Jim Whitney, developer and builder. Mark Badanza, City Council Member and Solicitor. Peter Angelini, City Council, Member and Environmental Consultant. And as other, we have Melanie Michaels, Business Administrator, and Billy Sharptier, City Building Inspector.
Okay, so that is the list. Any other discussion on this request? You also, Counsel-
I'm just going to, I agree with the list, I'm just going to make a comment that I think it's important, and other projects that we've done has always been parent representatives from this, the school community, either the BTO or the school association, but there, there doesn't seem to be anybody from the, the school or the neighborhood, you know, to weigh in on this, so I'm a little disappointed that that's not, not part of the, the list.
Okay, through the President, to the Counsel at Large, I could check into that, but I believe this committee is appointed under a new regulation, and all these particular categories are designated by the regulation itself, and I don't know if the regulation permits for that, but I'm willing to check with the mayor and determine, it, it's a valid point, I, I'm going to, I'll look into it.
Through the chair, we served on, on the high school committee-
Right.
There were representatives-
I remember.
From, you know, parent groups.
Unfortunately, a few years has passed since then.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting this request signify in usual manner. Those opposed, so Madam Clerk, that's going to be a vote of nine to zero on the ones that there is no abstentions from, and then eight to one on, I'm sorry, eight to zero on each of the others, but, okay? All right, so moving on to the resolution, C-45, Madam Chair of Ways and Means, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We had a well-thought-out and well-prepared presentation for us this evening, explaining the, everything that went into the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We've all had the opportunity to look it over and read it, so has the public, so it'd be my position to grant the resolution of the final Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
Okay, Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr?
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation, unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C-45. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-45 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-45 has been granted. Okay, and there is, obviously, with this resolution, there's a signature component, so please don't run out until everybody gets a chance to sign it. I will ask, there is no, none specifically on the agenda, but is there any new business to come before the City Council? Any old business to come before the City Council? Counsel, Counsel Freedom?
Actually, it was probably new business, and I meant to do it at the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to propose, and I, I'll propose it now, moment, moment of silence for Congressman John Oliver. John was our congressman for a number of years. Our grand administrator, Wendy Weeks, worked for him for, for quite some time, and he was incredibly instrumental in a lot of finances that we received in this community. Proposals to repair Route Two and do a lot of infrastructure work on Route Two. He benefited the, the city of Lemonster in a number of different ways. As a trustee of Mount Wychusett Community College, he was, he was ahead of his time with climate, climate change, and looking at the environment, providing wind turbines for the school. His, his Ways and Means appropriations, I mean, he was a state senator, he was House of Representative, he was just a, a really caring individual and a brilliant man. I had the pleasure of working with him when I was on the school committee and for many years as a counselor, and he was our congressman for quite some time until redistricting took place and things changed. So he passed away recently at the age of 86, so I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Congressman Oliver.
Thank you very much, and I'd also like to add that I, I did read online as well that there's going to be a, it sounds like it's wide open to the public, I think it's going to be at UMS Amherst in April, don't quote me on the date, but I think it might be, I think I might have read the, the 16th, which is a Sunday, there's going to be a, sort of an open house, a reception in his honor there, a memorial-type service, and just to echo those sentiments, you know, he was our congressman when I first got on the City Council, and I was very surprised one Saturday morning, he, he himself called me, he invited me to an event that was going on in town, wanted to make sure I had gotten the message, and we had a great conversation. I think at the time, the federal government was spending a lot of money on roads and bridges back in the, maybe 2012, 2013 timeframe, and we had a, we had a very great discussion about infrastructure of that nature, and he really was just a great, a great public servant, a great genuine, genuine person, and certainly, you know, he, he did a lot of good when he was our congressman, and for all those that loved and cared about him so much and worked for him, that, you know, he's going to be missed, so thank you very much for bringing that, for bringing this to, have a moment of silence. Counselor Angelini, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, actually, thank you, Mr. President. Back, I shudder to think how many years, but probably close to 20 years ago, one is the land trust in the city, we're actively pursuing open space in the water supply, there's a piece of land on Elm Street that was owned by National Grid, and it, it, something that they had owned for years and years and years, and John Oliver actually approached them, and it turns out that he had gone to graduate school with a, a young lady who was running the company, at least the northeast division at the time, and he was able to convince her that putting that piece of property for auction would be in the best interest of the community, it would help the land trust and the city close a hiking trail that was a piece of land that sort of prevented us from connecting all the way from Pittsburgh-Lemonster line over to Sterling. So I'd certainly commend the former congressman for his efforts on that project, and it's, it would be a testament, I think, to his commitment to open space and enjoy hiking in the great old doors, I know. So I'd like to echo the at-large Counselor's thoughts, and support the moment of silence, obviously.
Good. Any other discussion before we have a moment of silence? Okay, seeing none, I would like to have a, a moment of silence for our, from former Thank you all very much. Is there any other new business, old business? Anything to come under the community calendar? Anybody, any sports teams bring home another championship, or what, Counselor Cormier?
I just-
Any hockey teams that are bringing anything home, or?
No, but the Bruins are playing right now, so I'll be happy when this-
Okay.
I just want to remind everybody, particularly in my neighborhood tonight, trash in the city has been delayed a day, so that translates to the entire city, that trash is going, no pickup tomorrow, delayed a day. Also, don't forget the parking ban throughout the city, we had some issues at the little miniature store we had the other day, and it really does create a big mess when they're trying to plow, so get your cars off the streets and put your trash barrels away.
Absolutely, I think the parking ban went into effect at six tonight, and it's in effect till six tomorrow night, and yes, everybody, all trash is delayed a day, so if you were Tuesday, you'll be Wednesday, if you were Wednesday, you'll be Thursday, if you were Thursday, you'll be Friday, if you were Friday, you'll be Saturday, okay?
We get it.
There's also free parking at the train station in North Lemonster, for anyone who needs to get their car off the street.
Yep, perfect, they, they were gracious enough to offer that, thank you very much, Counsel Brady, I did get that message as well today. And Madam Clerk?
So the mayor's office just notified me that City Hall will be opening at a delayed start tomorrow by two hours, and they will reassess whether they're opening at the delayed part or at all at eight o'clock AM, so as of right now, we're opening at 10:30 AM tomorrow.
Okay, all right, any other, any other items in the community calendar? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn. Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr, and then Counselor Badanza, will you want to second it?
Sure.
All those in favor, Chairman, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are adjourned, everybody enjoy the snowstorm.